Hello, everyone. This is Kelly Beatty coming to you live from the gymnasium at the Chelmsford High School for the fall session of our annual town meeting. Now, those of you who were with us back in the spring saw this as our response to the COVID-19 pandemic, to have the required social distancing. Got to say that I missed the cozy confines of the senior center, not to mention the Boy Scout snack bar off to the side that not a lot of people know about. But this is what it is, and we've got all of our town meeting representatives from all the nine precincts assembling here for what we hope will be a one-night stand. There are 19 articles on the town meeting warrant, and according to town manager Paul Cohen, there is a chance that we'll get through those all in one night. There's been a kind of evolution of town meetings in the last few years where people are less apt to just stand up for argument's sake, and they really want to kind of get to the crux of any given article and deal with it and move on. That's been helped, I'm sure, by town moderator John Curland, who's instituted some policies that have kept things moving pretty directly. So let me give you a preview of what you're going to hear tonight. Again, there are 19 articles. Two of them have been withdrawn already. Those have to do with collective bargaining agreements and also with the adjustments to the fiscal 2021 town budget, which was passed back in the spring. There are no adjustments needed for that, and the contracts with the unions aren't finalized yet, so that will be too fewer than we have. We're going to start with Article One, which is called Reports From Town Officers and Committees. The linchpin this time around will be a presentation by John Souza, our town accountant, who will tell us about the five-year plan for the town, and that will give us a heads-up for what is coming down the road. It's a way to set up what will follow in terms of some of the town meeting warrants. One of the things that he'll tell us is that although we're in pretty good shape with revenues in fiscal 2021, the one that we're in right now, it will not be so good in 2022 because of the lingering effects of the pandemic on local tax revenues, especially think about meals taxes and the hotel tax. So following Article One will be a series of four articles, two through five, that will be grouped together under what's called a consent warrant. Rather than debate each of those for individually, they'll be presented as a group, and if no one objects, they'll be all voted on as a group, and that will move things along pretty quickly. So the first couple of real articles will be Article Eight, which is a warrant for acquiring a small portion, a fraction, of an acre of conservation land. That should go pretty quickly. But then there'll be two really meaty articles. Article Nine talks about the expansion and renovation of the North Fire Station, proposed at $3.4 million. That's the oldest fire station in town, and it's ill-equipped for the current situation, not only from a technology point of view. You can imagine the wiring from the 1950s, but also just the nature of our fire department now. You know, it's mixed gender, whereas that station is set up for just an all-male force. So that will be presented, and in the meantime, Article Ten will be a return to visiting the capital budget for the fiscal year. Now, you might remember from the spring, we had some dire predictions for how much income we would have, how much state aid we would have, and so the Capitol Committee chaired by John Souza made some really draconian cuts and passed only the very minimal number of projects that needed funding. Well, you'll hear tonight that the prospects for funding are a lot rosier. Our income is good. Our state aid is going to be higher than expected, it appears. And so John Souza and the committee have come back with five additional projects for funding in this fiscal year. The high ends of those are three-quarters of a million dollars for sidewalks and also roadway construction, a redo of the Parker Middle School kitchen, also the McCarthy Auditorium. So we're getting ready now for John Curland to begin us with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will say the two that are the sleepers here, Article 16 and 17, have the potential to go on well into the night, so we'll just have to see.
All be seated. We will now test. Please, everyone should test their votes. We have the speaker? Okay. Would everyone please get their clickers, and we'll test to determine whether we have a quorum. While we're doing that, for the record, I'd like to say that I did see the return of -- for the record, I did see the return of service from the constable and that this notice of this meeting had been duly posted. Okay. Okay, we officially have a quorum. Thank you. I also have to announce that the locations of the emergency exits, there are several on each side and a few in the front and the back. If you have to leave the meeting early, kindly drop off your electronic voting devices with the checkers. I would like to welcome all town meeting reps to tonight's meeting. No one is happy that we have to meet under these circumstances, and I can assure you that we have taken all measures consistent with the Center for Disease Control and Massachusetts Department of Public Health to ensure your safety. There were a lot of people who made this meeting possible, but for the sake of brevity, I won't name each one. I just wish to, on the record, thank them all. As has been our practice, we have two screens so that all representatives may read the articles and any amendments upon which you will be voting. Speaking of amendments, all amendments must be submitted on the forms, which you can get from either the town clerk or myself. This forum will generate an original and three copies. I retain the top white copy. The yellow copy goes to the amendment assistant, the pink copy to the town clerk, and you retain the orange copy for your records. Here are the rules with respect to town meeting protocol and procedure. All questions and debate shall emanate from the microphone facing the moderator in the gym and shall go through the moderator. Board or committee members, other town officials, or department heads may use other microphones to answer questions or provide information to the meeting. Speakers shall refrain from asking rhetorical or argumentative questions and shall only ask questions seeking needed information. The questions should be in the "who," "what," "when," "where," and "why" mode. Kindly avoid argumentative questions that start or end with "isn't it true?" or "wouldn't you admit?" I would prefer not to have to rule questions out of order, but I am bound by the laws and regulations that define our conduct, and I will do so to the best of my ability to enforce them fairly and respectfully. I will allow a reasonable amount of follow-up questions, but I will have to intervene if any individual is asking an excessive amount of questions. All presenters shall be limited to 10 minutes. If there are any that require additional time, advise me in advance, and if I deem it necessary, I will grant additional time. I shall notify each presenter when there is one minute remaining. With respect to discussions, speakers are encouraged to be brief, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes of debate. You should be able to make your points within three minutes. If you truly believe that this is not enough time for you to make your arguments, kindly advise me in advance, and I may allow some leeway. Speakers should ask their questions prior to engaging in discussion. Making inquiries will not be considered as part of the three-minute discussion limit unless you have started discussion and then asked questions. Once the clock starts, it will not stop until the speaker does or time expires. I would appreciate being advised at the time that a speaker is beginning discussion. Again, I will notify you when there is one minute remaining. We do have some other rules of protocol. Please do not refer to any prior speaker by name. The proper designation is to call him or her the previous speaker. Please refrain from personal attacks. Challenging or arguing in opposition to another's position is fair game and is what this meeting is all about. Intentional slander against any individual or group cannot be tolerated. Let us refrain from repeating arguments that have already been made, but new ideas or distinctions are welcome and encouraged. Discussion of pending litigation will not be permitted unless specifically included in the warrant article being debated. If during the course of discussion I observe several speakers on one side of an issue but none in opposition, I will interrupt debate to inquire if there are any who wish to express an opposing position or offer an amendment. If there are none, I shall end debate and move the question. If there is opposition, I will move that party to the front of the line and allow debate to continue. I trust that you will all appreciate how this will advance our mutual goal of moving town meeting along. To those who may be next in line, should I ever have to exercise this process, you have my apologies in advance. There will not be any debating from the presenters' podium. They may answer questions, but should they want to engage in debate, presenters would have to queue up in line like everyone else. A person should not speak a second time until everyone has had an opportunity to speak unless the previous speaker wishes to correct or dispute a statement of fact made by another previous speaker. This privilege will be narrowly construed by the moderator. Transparency and effective governance are the two goals of town meeting. To expedite our meetings without affecting transparency, we have successfully employed a process called Consent Agenda. A Consent Agenda allows representatives to bundle several routine warrant articles into one so that instead of taking several separate votes on these essentially bookkeeping articles, we can take one vote on all of them. The town manager and I have discussed the type of articles that would be conducive to this process. These are articles that generally do not involve any questions or debate and are passed in the normal course of town business. I shall request a motion that the body vote to approve a Consent Agenda involving the articles to be included in the Consent Agenda. This still allows for questions and answers and discussion with the opportunity to add or delete Consent Agenda articles as town meeting deems best. The articles that I am suggesting for tonight's Consent Agenda are Articles Two through Seven. Thank you. Mr. Manager? Hold on. Hold up. Good evening. There we go. I'm here to begin Article One, which is customary to hear reports from town officers and committees. We have four reports this evening. The first is from the Vision and Values Committee. Aaron Cunningham will be presenting the report from the committee established by the Select Board. Next, Christina Papadopoulos, the town engineer, will provide a brief report on the Stormwater Master Plan. Our finance director, John Souza, will provide the five-year financial forecast, and then I'll conclude with a financial overview of tonight's meeting. So without any further ado, I'll turn the podium over to Aaron Cunningham to provide a report on the Vision and Values Committee.
Good evening. Aaron Cunningham, 67 Belrika Road. And as Paul said, I'm here to present our Visions and Value Committee output report. So the Select Board established the Visions and Value Committee to come up with a common vision and set of values for the town of Chelmsford. The expectation was that this vision statement would establish the guiding principles for our citizens, local business community, and the municipal operations of the town. It's going to be, it's supposed to be a framework for our culture, our goals, and our objectives throughout the entire town. The vision statement is supposed to articulate our quest or our path to the future. It's supposed to define what we aspire to become, what we create, and what we want to achieve. The values are the core principles and the standards by which we do business. They define what we believe in, what we know to be right, and how we want to be known to others. So the process was the Select Board formed the committee with representatives from the board, town management, and representatives from the residency. The committee established and conducted a public survey. We held two public input sessions and many, many working sessions. So we came up with this for our vision. The town of Chelmsford will be a livable, inclusive, diverse, welcoming, multi-generational community. Mindful of our historic past, we are adaptive and responsive to our dynamic environment. Our residents enjoy excellence in education, access to open space, and a vibrant, sustainable quality of life. And the values on which we stand upon: inclusiveness and diversity, civic and community engagement, transparency, honesty, and integrity; respect and empathy, accountability, stewardship, fiscal responsibility, sustainability, and innovation, adaptability, and creativity. So our recommendations and next steps were to ask the Select Board to formally adopt the vision and value statements presented by the committee, and then we are here tonight to report out to you at town meeting. Requesting that the town administration post and adopt these visions and value statements on the town website and in all of our municipal buildings. We're also recommending that town boards, committees, and municipal departments conduct goal-setting and strategic planning in alignment with these visions and values that we came up with. The Select Board reviews these visions and value statements on a periodic basis, at least once every 10 years. The point is here that these are meant to guide all of us, and we feel very strongly that this is a path forward for us. However, it is something that should continue to live and breathe, and resetting this once every 10 years is a key part of that. I appreciate your time today, but most importantly for me, I'd like to thank the Select Board for the opportunity to serve on this committee. It meant a lot to me. And more importantly, I'd really like to thank the committee members, who I think we brought out the best in each other and the best for what we believe is right for the community. So Deidre, I'd like to thank you. It was an honor to serve with you. Paul, Michael, I appreciated your input and your understanding and your guidance for how the town operates. And Emily in Virginia, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you and help take your visions and make them come alive. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Christina Papadopoulos, town engineer. And tonight I'd like to give you an update on the Stormwater Master Plan Advisory Committee, which has finalized the Stormwater Master Plan. Oh, thank you. Our objective was to develop a comprehensive stormwater master plan to protect the town's assets and natural resources through proactive stormwater management. The final master plan will provide the town with a better overall understanding of the condition of its existing stormwater infrastructure. It will develop a townwide plan to manage and maintain that infrastructure. It'll evaluate how to meet state and federal regulations, and it will develop a stormwater management funding strategy to optimize the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. A little background on it, in March of 2019, Weston and Sampson were awarded the project to create a stormwater management master plan for Chelmsford. They collected data and began having monthly meetings with representatives from each of the town meeting precincts, as well as town officials and various board members. We named it the Stormwater Master Plan Advisory Committee, SWIMPAC for short. The last meeting we had was on September 15th, 2020. We voted by October 13th to endorse the Stormwater Master Plan. Here are the resident members and board members of the SWIMPAC. Our Joanne Anderson, Emily Antle, Diane Baxter, Sam Chase, Kathy Duffy, Glenn Thorne, Will Wagner, Mike Walsh, Harry Wetzel. The town employees, Steve Yonley, Christina Papadopoulos, Courtney Thompson, Evan Belansky, Katie Gerton, Sue Rosa, and Sean Shanhan. And I thank you all very much for helping to create the Stormwater Master Plan. It was wonderful working with you. So here's background on developing the master plan. Weston and Sampson started off by collecting the data and by drainage mapping. They performed field investigations and did an opportunities analysis. They looked at localized flooding areas and investigated them and came up with recommendations. We created the public stakeholder engagement, which was the SWIMPAC. Also, surveys were mailed to residents. The MS4, the Stormwater Compliance Review, which is our federal regulations, the Stormwater BMP, which is basically our stormwater infrastructure retrofit opportunities so we can have cleaner water. They did a stream and culvert assessment where they looked at over 200 of our culverts. They created a prioritization, and with that, a capital improvement plan over the next 20 years. This is, this shows an example of some of the reports. So we have here Bentley Lane with culvert number 65, and it's a 36-inch corrugated metal pipe. And they inspected it and came up with an analysis on how deteriorated it was and how unsafe it was and whether it needed to be replaced immediately or if we had some time. So after they did that analysis, it got placed into the capital improvement plan into year six. So the right bottom there says it's year six, so in 2026, we can expect to potentially be replacing this corrugated metal pipe. So now that we've created that stormwater master plan, more information will be presented because it is a very large document at a forthcoming Select Board meeting, so stay tuned for that if you want more information on it. And we will be asking the Select Board to approve the Stormwater Management Master Plan, and we're going to begin implementing the capital improvement plan. We will be updating this plan regularly. It is meant to be a living document, and so it can change as needed. We will be continuing to identify priority areas and maintaining that, such as in the life cycle of a utility. We study the area, we design a solution, construct, and then proceed to operation and maintenance, and then continue back through the cycle. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight I'd like to provide you with some highlights of our updated five-year financial forecast. In this presentation, we'll take a look at revenue sources, expenditure trends, and then look at the overall forecast. Under revenue, looking ahead for fiscal year '22, our largest source is local property taxes. And just to run through how this works, under state law, we start with our levy base of 105.93 million, which is a historical figure from the prior year. Then we add the 2.5% increase allowed, add estimated new growth of 1.5 million, and then finally 3.19 million for excluded debt. And that gives us a maximum levy of about 113.27 million that can be raised through property taxes. For this forecast, it's important to note that at this time, it appears that the tax levy we'll be using in the budget will actually be 1.68 million under the maximum levy. Moving on to state aid, our second largest revenue source, Chapter 70 aid for education is the largest component. We're estimating that Chapter 70 will decrease 5% or about $560,000 for fiscal year '22 to about $10.6 million. We're also anticipating that our general municipal aid will decrease by 5% or $270,000 for fiscal year '22, which will bring it to about $5.1 million. State aid remains uncertain at this time due to possible declines in state tax revenues resulting from the pandemic and the economic damage that that's caused. The next category of revenue is available funds, which includes a variety of reimbursements from various revolving funds and special purpose funds. A reimbursement is annually included for the School Child Care Fund to cover the cost of employee health insurance. And the forecast also assumes that we'll continue to have a $2.3 million transfer from our sewer capital construction fund, which is a part of our long-term financing plan to finance the construction costs of the sewer system that were completed after 2005. And then finally, the FY '22 budget forecast assumes a transfer of $2 million from the General Stabilization Fund. Then the last revenue category is local receipts, and we know from the past that's a variety of various taxes and fees. Motor vehicle excise tax accounts for over 50% of that category. And for the coming fiscal year, we're projecting that motor vehicle excise will be unchanged at around $4.9 million, and that's based on just trends we're seeing with declining new car sales. In total, the total for this category, it's basically going to remain flat. We're forecasting a 0.2% increase. So if we bring all four revenue categories together on this slide, you can see the total amount that's available is $142 million, $142.5 million. Moving on to expenditures, just to cover those assumptions, for general government personnel, the forecast includes step increases for eligible personnel and a 2% cost of looming allowance. General government expenses are anticipated to increase 2%. The Chelmsford Public Schools, we're anticipating a $2 million increase for fiscal year '22. And for Neshoba Technical High School, we're projecting that assessment will increase somewhere around $344,000, and this is based on the enrollment of 10 additional Chelmsford students at Neshoba Tech. Moving on to debt service, debt service is broken down into excluded debt, non-excluded debt, and betterment-funded debt. Excluded debt, as you may know, is only, only covers those projects where voters have approved a proposition two-and-a-half-debt exclusion. So if we go to look at this chart, you'll see that excluded debt service is shown in red, and it's currently $3.65 billion this fiscal year. It's going to decline around $460,000 next year. Now, all the way down, it'll reach about $1.1 Now, all the way down, it'll reach about 1.1 million by fiscal year '25. All of our excluded debt for the sewer project phases will be retired by fiscal year '24. Non-excluded debt service is shown in blue on the chart, and it was 7.54 million last year in fiscal year '20. This year, it declined slightly to around 7.45 million. And that number includes a projection for the additional capital projects and the North Station, North Fire Station projects that we'll be discussing later this evening. Projected debt service also assumes that we'll continue to borrow annually around 3.6 to 3.8 million for our capital improvement program. Finally, betterment-funded debt service is shown in yellow on the chart. And as the name implies, this is debt service for all of the sewer project phases that came after 2005. And you can see that that's going to remain around 2.3 million for all of the years in the forecast. Next, we look at employee benefits. Two key things on this chart. Our Middlesex Retirement Assessment for fiscal year '22 is going to increase by about 371,000 to 9.88 million. And this is based on the latest actuarial valuation that was performed for Middlesex County Retirement System as of January 1st, 2020. Our health insurance budget includes an estimated increase of 641,000, which is basically a 5% increase. Pulling all of the various expenditure categories together by function, you can see on this slide that the total is 142.5 million. And then if we go to this forecast summary where we match up revenues and expenditures, we'll discuss that next. The numbers on this are a little small. I know you have these in your handout, so we're going to go on to a summary slide to make it a little easier to see on the, on the screen. And at this point, I'm projecting for fiscal year '22, we will have a balanced budget. And then if you look for fiscal year '23 out through fiscal year '26, you'll see deficit balances. However, I would call your attention to, for fiscal year '23, the 565,000 projection deficit balance is only, only equates to about less than a half a percent. And all of the, all of the percentages you see, if you take it as a, the deficit projection as a balance, as a percentage of the budget, they range between 40%, they're all under 1%. So being that they're under 1% of our budget, I'm confident that we can take the necessary steps and manage those as we, as we get closer to those fiscal years. When we look at the forecast at this point, it's, it's important to remember that we're still early in the budget cycle, and there are three main uncertain factors that can have a big impact in the months ahead. First is state aid. I spoke about that earlier, and we should know more in late January as the state budget process unfolds. Our health insurance premium increase, you know, this year, our current health insurance budget for all town, school, employees, and retirees is 12.83 million. So you can see the impact of a big number like that. Every 1% equates to just over 128,000. The Neshoba Assessment I talked a little bit about earlier, that's, that's driven by the enrollment. So we will have to continue to follow this in the months ahead. Moving on to reserves, our financial plan for the next five years includes maintaining a healthy stabilization fund and dedicating reserves towards replenishing the stabilization fund when they're available. The town ended fiscal year '20 with just over 1.72 million in free cash, which is just about 39,000 lower than it was last year. As we know from the past, the amount of free cash that's generated varies each year. This next, this slide shows a history of the free cash since 2012, and you can see that we show the amounts as a percentage of budgeted operating revenue. This year, it was equal to about 1.24% of budgeted revenue, which is slightly below where it was last year. If we take a look at the stabilization fund, you'll see a history on this, on this slide of the fund since 2009 and the updated plan going forward. We closed the fiscal year on June 30th with a stabilization fund balance of 11.4 million. For fiscal year '21, town meeting authorized two withdrawals that, that were just over 2.2 million. And we, and you see in the chart here that I have the $2 million transfer plan for fiscal year '22 to support the operating budget. The transfers in the years after that from fiscal year '23 and on are really there just for contingency, for unforeseen events, or an emergency building repair, something of that nature. This chart shows a history of the stabilization fund balance as a percentage of total budgeted operating revenue, and you see the current fiscal year is colored in red. When you look at the graph, you see that we were fortunate to have ended fiscal year '20 with a balance of over 11 million, and that was about the high point. When we attended fall town meeting one year ago, none of us could have predicted that a pandemic would occur and that we would need to withdraw 2 million to maintain services in our fiscal year '21 budget. Stabilization reserves are something that credit rating agencies such as Standard and Poor's pay very close attention to. We need to, going forward, we need to maintain adequate stabilization reserves to retain our AA+ bond rating, reduce our long-term future borrowing costs, and also to give us the financial flexibility to respond to any unforeseen emergencies in the years ahead. That concludes the forecast. And thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, John, for the five-year forecast. I'll now give an overview of what we have before us this evening for our consideration. Since we last gathered four months ago in June, as was noted in John's report, we finished the fiscal year in the black, the $1.7 million free cash balance, which includes the 335,000 that's going to be transferred to the sewer construction stabilization fund as per the financial plan for the sewer project. And as John noted, it's about 1.2% of our budget. The good news is, is the state made a commitment at the end of July, when it finished its then-session before it is now extended probably to the end of the calendar year. But at that time, recognizing that cities and towns had to make their budget preparations for the fall and get tax bills issued and so forth, they committed to level fund state aid, which exceeded our forecast back in June of a decrease of 10% in state aid of $3.4 million. What's going to result of this is we're leaving the budget unchanged in terms of the operating budget, and therefore, there'll be a significant reduction from what otherwise would have been in terms of the property tax. And in fact, you'll see that over the last two-quarter bills of the fiscal year because the preliminary bills were forecast on a, an increase. The other thing we did is we heard loud and clear at the June town meeting that there was a desire to make sure we were putting funding into our roadway infrastructure and sidewalks. And so again, with that relief that the state brought us in terms of committing to level fund our state aid, we returned to the capital plan process and saw opportunities that will, at the end of the day, will amount to a $400,000 debt service payment. The critical of this is we restored the funding for road improvements. So when the weather breaks in April, DPW will be out there doing road improvements for, you know, which is the time to do it once we get through the pothole season of the winter. We also have work on sidewalk construction. The fire department has a request for turnout gear. And, and having an opportunity with the schools offering a hybrid model and not utilizing the cafeterias of the schools. We are coming in for a full renovation of the Parker School Kitchen to augment the preliminary work that was done at the June, funded at the June town meeting. And lastly, we're going to do an overhaul of the McCarthy School Auditorium. And again, we appreciate the support that we had from Superintendent Lang and the school committee and so forth as we gathered with the three boards, Finance Committee, Select Board, and School Committee to pull together a plan. So as I noted a moment ago, we expect to have $3 million in excess levy capacity. And in terms of putting that in a manner of perspective, the 2.5% allowed increase in the Proposition 2.5 is 2.54 million. We have a new growth estimate of 1.6 million. That'll be wrapped up in the weeks ahead as the assessors complete the revaluation of properties in the community, hold hearings on those valuations, and then the select board holds the tax classification hearing. Once again, not surprising, anyone's paying attention to what's going on in the market. We continue to see the greater increase and significant increase in residential values versus the stagnant commercial market. And so at this point, to be conservative, we would estimate that the fiscal year average increase in the single-family property tax bill will be somewhere between 500 to $50 to $100. And again, the average bill right now is 73.62. If you wanted to eliminate it, and that this will be a subject of articles later this evening, roughly a million dollars would assure you that there would be no net tax increase in the year ahead. But the big question that I have in giving the overview, and you've seen in John's model, is, is what happens in fiscal year '22? Anyone who's following what's happening at the state level, the national level, and clearly even in the municipal level recognizes that we're not out of the woods yet in terms of the impacts from the coronavirus. It's a multi-year impact. The governor came forward with a budget plan last week that demonstrated the state's commitment to get us through fiscal year '21. But again, he gave concerns and warnings about fiscal year '22. As John noted, our stabilization fund balance is 9.5 million, following the 2 million we projected into it. And so if nothing were to be returned into the stabilization fund, we'd be at 6.7% below the midpoint of where we strive to be at 7.5. Again, when we look to '22, the state is forecasting less revenue this year. What's that going to mean in '22 as the impacts of the coronavirus shutdown linger forward? State aid cuts? You're in a non-election year. What will the town's free cash balance be at the end of this fiscal year, given that we've tightened the belt and reduced areas of funding in the budget such as snow and ice removal and so forth? And so again, what we'd like to do is do a multi-year approach of $2 million to the stabilization fund this year and then the upcoming year. Otherwise, if you go all-in for this fiscal year, then you could be looking at a substantial increase from the current fiscal year to the next fiscal year of between $400 to $500. And again, what we try to do is do stability and smoothness in terms of the financial aspects of the community. And then the final point I'll note is, why might there be a dramatic increase in residential property taxes for '22? Again, the shift continues towards residential property values versus commercial. So even if we assess the same amount of property taxes, that burden's going to shift over to residential because we see the commercial market stagnant, given the impacts of the economy. Again, you're in a non-election year in terms of state aid. This year, you saw the state kept doing temporary budgets, and they'll hopefully have one adopted by Thanksgiving, and then they would ultimately, on a normal schedule, begin the next month. The sluggish economy again is reducing our local revenues. Our employee compensation schedules continue next year. It would be the third and final year of our collective bargaining agreements. John noted earlier, the retirement assessment increase, that's now known for fiscal '22. We know we're entering into a new solid waste contract that also provides a significant increase. And then again, we've tightened the belt by already reducing our snow and ice and OPEB budgets. So again, it becomes a challenging period. So with that, Mr. Moderator, I conclude the work under Article 1 and reports, and am ready to proceed now with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, so the first business will be to vote on the six Warren articles, just to approve the fact that we're going to be treating them as a consent agenda. They are Article 2 Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund, Article 3 Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund, Article 4 Sewer Construction Stabilization Fund, Article 5 Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund, Article 6 Funding for Collective Bargaining Agreements, and Article 7 Amended Fiscal Year 2021 Operating Budget. So can we put the screen up? And we'll, we'll vote to determine whether or not we're going to. And by the way, just because we vote to treat it as a consent agenda, anyone could move to remove any of the articles or amend them if they deem appropriate. So a vote, yes, will be to consider these six articles as one for purposes of voting.
This notion of a consent agenda is a fairly new wrinkle in our town meeting procedures. It does save a bunch of time because it, as you can see, it groups a number of rather perfunctory articles into one. Often, this is the case when there are a number of.
So it is passed unanimously with one abstention. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, we'll, we'll give you the overview and again, address any questions that may have. The first article under the consent agenda is Article 2. This is an article that appears repeatedly at each town meeting. It's, it's a transfer of $50,000 from the sale of Graves and Lots account to fund the Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund. We're now at, the Cemetery Commission is now into Phase 4 of the cemetery, of the expansion of Pine Ridge Cemetery, which basically the funding will be used for looming and seeding and final prep work out there. And then also, there's a need at the cemetery for the construction of a columbarium or a niche wall at Pine Ridge Cemetery because the two existing niche walls that handle cremations are 85% sold. Article 3 is another ministerial article. It is an appropriation of just under $11,000 by the town from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund. And we're required to bring this to town meeting and utilize it for an allowed use. And the use we're funding is to fund a portion of the costs to install solar-powered flashing LED stop signs and other traffic safety improvements at the intersection of Granifield Road and School Street. Again, this comes every fall to town meeting because back in 2016, the legislature enacted oversight legislation regarding the rideshare industry where there's a 20 cent per ride assessment. The town meeting has to appropriate the town share, and then we have to report annually how we expend the monies to the state. During the past calendar year, in 2019, the town received, again, almost $11,000, which meant that almost 107,000 rides originated in the community in 2009. And again, we have to be used for these specific purposes. Article 4 is the Sewer Construction Stabilization Fund. This is a transfer of $335,050 to, to the Sewer Construction Stabilization Fund from the town's free cash. And again, this is a mechanism we do every fall because the finance director, treasurer collector work with the accountant and certifies what was the amount of interest earnings on the sewer capital improvement and betterment accounts during the prior fiscal year. And the reason we do this is we're required to put those funds in there, the town's asked to put those funds in there because that was part of the financial plan for the sewer project. And under Mass General laws, unless you have a special act or otherwise provided for under state law, you need a town meeting vote to transfer these monies into the Sewer Construction Stabilization Fund. Right now, the current balance in that fund is, is just under $2.3 million. Article 5 is again, a mechanical act where we're seeking to transfer funds that have been available by the planning board's activities on affordable housing projects into the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund. And the remount requested is a transfer of $618,750, which is the amount that's been received. And this again is provided for under the town's bylaws. The town's inclusionary zoning bylaw requires the payment in lieu of monies to be transferred into the Housing Stabilization Fund. And this 618,750 comes from two projects, 241 Littleton Road and the second project being Griss Mill. And so again, what this does, it just ministerially moves that money into the stabilization fund. And then at a future town meeting, if there's a request to utilize these monies, it will come before you for a two-thirds vote to expend those monies. And then the last two items under the consent agenda are no action. We left a placeholder for funding for collective bargaining agreements. There are none to bring before you this evening. And as I mentioned earlier, finally, under Article 7, we kept the placeholder if there were any amendments to the current fiscal year's operating budget, and there are no such amendments. So that concludes the presentation under our, under the consent agenda, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, and takes no actions on 6 and 7.
And does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval by about a four in favor, zero against, and one absent to the Warren Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Thank you. Now's the time, if anyone has any questions, comments.
Sam Holden, precinct eight, just a.
Just a question through the moderator to the manager. What is the source of the funds? How is that money collected in the... I'm sorry, on Article 5?
Article 5.
The affordable housing?
That comes from the planning board. Under the town's inclusionary housing bylaw that allows for greater density, the planning board, which oversees and issues furniture for projects, either works with the developer to either construct affordable units or make a payment in lieu of the construction of affordable units. So it's private monies that are provided from development that then goes into a fund that then would be available to the town to fund affordable housing projects in the future. So it's not town monies, it's private monies in lieu of constructing affordable units.
So that came during the construction of the affordable units from the contractor or the developer?
Yes, it's payment in lieu of constructing those, making those units affordable, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know, and maybe this isn't a question for you, Paul, what's the... How is that number, the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund dollar amount, how has that arrived at?
It's a negotiation between the planning board and the applicant that comes before the planning board. And that's allowed for under the bylaw. They either have to construct the units or you negotiate a fee with the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, I will now entertain a vote to accept the consent agenda. Articles 2 through 7. Actually, 6 and 7 are no action, so 2 through 5 really.
And just like that, we're more than one-third of the way through our town meeting warrant, but many of the articles coming down after these will be considerably more timed.
Passes unanimously, 118 in favor, no opposition, and two abstentions. Article 8?
Okay, Article 8 is a request for an appropriation of $16,200 to acquire a piece of parcel of land containing .14 acres of vacant land on Parker Road and to be placed under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission for the purpose of open space. And it may be hard to see on the parcel, but it's that blue area, that blue, almost like eye that's on the parcel. And why this is of interest, even though it's a small parcel, is directly below it is the Wright Reservation, which is held by the Conservation Commission, and directly across to the north is the Warren Pole property. And so again, the estate for the property owner reached out to the town and said, would there be any interest for the town to acquire this property? I immediately reached out to Dave McGlocklin, the chair of the Conservation Commission, and the response came back, sure, let's pursue it. We're paying the assessed value for the property, which is $16,200. It'll be held as frontage by the Conservation Commission. And again, the whole goal is to, you know, allow that corridor. And then the big next question may be, well, how did this come to be, this little parcel there? And I worked with Frank Green, our assessor, and did some research, and believe it or not, it goes back almost 100 years, this little orphaned parcel that's out there from when the Wright family owned the parcel below and the Warren family owned the parcel above. There was a third party that, you know, had this parcel, and now the family's dealing with the estate, and therefore, they've offered it to the community, and the commission requests your consideration of this to, again, as frontage between this corridor for open space. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 8.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of four for the project, zero against, and one was absent.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or discussion with regards to Article 8? There being none, I'll entertain a vote on Article 8. The article passes, 118 in favor, four opposed, and one abstention. Article 9?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 9 is a request for an appropriation of $3.4 million for the renovation and expansion of the North Fire Station on Princeton Street, and this would be funded by borrowing. I'm going to now turn the podium over to Fire Chief Gary Ryan, who can best explain the need for this renovation and expansion project and the details of what's being proposed for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, members. Let us look at Engine 2, better known as the North Fire Station at 35 Princeton Street. So what brought us here tonight, I tried to capture some of the timelines, what brought us here? Last year, the town hired an outside group called Criterion Associates to conduct a study of the four fire substations, north, south, east, and west. They were to look at the conditions of the building and to see if the buildings were suitable for expansion of staffing. On November 4, 2019, Criterion Associates presented their report to the Select Board. Couple of weeks later, on November 19, Town Manager Paul Cohen asked the Permanent Building Committee to explore options to expand and renovate the North Fire Station. The idea being whatever configuration the town decided to move in, the North Fire Station was always going to be part of the mix. January 7 of this year, the Permanent Building Committee toured the North Fire Station to evaluate the existing infrastructure of the building, of the 4,500 square feet, 3,000 is Apparatus Bay. February 4, the Permanent Building looked at, explored construction options. The modular concept was introduced. About a month later, preliminary modular building designs were presented to the Permanent Building Committee, and a couple of weeks later, the Permanent Building Committee approved the modular building design. Criterion Associates, when they presented their report to the Select Board, they noted that the existing substations were built for only two fire personnel. In fact, they said the buildings would be seriously challenged if a third or fourth person were added to the building. They were not adequate for expansion. Their stations were designed for a single gender workforce and not suitable for a modern fire workplace. Our outline stations only contain one restroom, one shower, and shared sleeping quarters. They lacked the accommodations found in a modern fire station. Adequate laundry and gear storage, office space, deconning of our gear and storage. And also, they noted outdated electrical and plumbing issues. In the report, they also noted significant health and safety issues, in particular, locating the bunk rooms within the Apparatus Bay. This exposes our members to carcinogen from the diesel exhaust from the engines, and also, the bunk rooms only have one way in and out, a lack of proper egress for today's codes. In addition to the Criterion Associates' report, the town's insurance provider, the Mass. Interlocal Insurance Association, better known as MYA, they conducted their own risk assessment of the Charleston Fire Department. And they noted what is known as OSHA's General Duty Clause. And to boil it down, if a hazard is spotted and recognized, the employer, myself, the town, have an obligation to address it. And they also cited two local recent issues. Back in December 30 of 2015, the Acton Fire Department had a ladder truck that caught fire within the station. Two years later, Concrete Engine 4 caught on fire while the firefighters were in the bunk room at 12:48 in the morning, with an estimated loss of 2.5 million. In addition, during a pandemic, what we're going through, the bunks are located too close. The bunks are required under the NPA 1581 to be 60 square feet. Basically, we're not socially distancing. This is a look back in time. This is the actual article back in March 8, 1954. Town meeting voted to appoint a committee to formulate plans for building a fire station at the site of the Princeton Street School. The North Fire Station was awarded by the Board of Selectmen on June 29, 1956. The contract was awarded to the DeWitt Granger Company for $63,540. Work began on August 1956. In occupancy, the building occurred four months later. Significant, you can't have that today. But the station was designed for a ladder truck or four pumpers. So what that tells you is that there was no... The inclusion of a bedroom wasn't even part of the original building plan. Because of COVID, obviously, like most fire departments, our station was closed. We weren't able to have a tour, so I did the best I could to try to capture the building. Going clockwise, looking at the picture at the left is the building as it looks at 35 Princeton Street. The picture at the right shows the building as it is on the municipal parking lot on Gay Street. The picture on the left is the rare access to the building. That is a drive-through bay. If you look to the right of that apparatus door, there's a window. That is to the bedroom. If this project goes forward, that would be opened up and another drive-through bay would be added. The picture to the right is the station as it is shown on Washington Street. Coming in through the front door, we have a small vestibule area, an office to the right. Again, these, the four stations only have one restroom, and as you can see, this one needs serious attention. The picture to the right shows the locker rooms located off the kitchen. Again, the locker room should be spaced in its own room. The kitchen, the insurance company noted that we have no ground electrical faults in the kitchen area. That was a safety issue. Engine 2 is the only station that has a basement. As you can see, we have some structural issues. The roof supports are exposed on the left. The stairs are not ADA compliant. Look at the Apparatus Bay. The picture to the left shows, it might be a little hard to see here, but we have structural cracks in the concrete walls, and as you can see, the ceiling to the Apparatus Bay is open. The picture to the right shows the three Apparatus Bays. The picture to the left shows the entrance to the bunk room. You can see there's some exercise equipment for the firefighters, and the picture to the right is obviously the bunk room. So what are we asking for? The renovation calls for taking down the existing building, keeping the apparatus building up, but taking down the building, putting a two-story modular structure on a slab. There'll be no basement. Each floor, two stories, will be 2,100 square feet per floor. The station will be protected by a sprinkler system that's the highest form of fire protection you can have. Six individual bunk rooms, which is very important, as we found out during the pandemic. The ability to accommodate solar panels, so that helps reduce our carbon footprint. A gear storage room with separate ventilation system, that meets today's code. ADA-compliant bathrooms, and again, we will repurpose the Apparatus bedroom into another drive-through bay. Benefits include a modern fire station with the same response time. It's on the same footprint. There is no impact to the current parking configuration. The station is designed for all genders, provides adequate space for additional staffing during emergency coverage, and it's a compliant workspace for our firefighters in the town from regulatory requirements. I know this might be a little difficult to see, but the picture on the left is the first floor, which has all the amenities of a fire station. It has an office when you come in, a lobby, kitchen, living room, half bathroom, and it has the gear storage room coming in off the Apparatus Bay. And that gear storage has its own ventilation system. Again, that is meeting today's code. The picture to the right is the second story. Six bedrooms, two full baths, a locker room, and the back portion is the gym. The Permanent Building Committee reviewed many options. One of the options was to do a complete tear-down. Take the building down, apparatus down, and do a complete rebuild. So 6,000 square feet plus a housing allowance, because we would have to house our firefighters up there, came to over $5 million. Option 2, the one that we're presenting tonight, take down the existing building, keep the Apparatus Bay, do some renovations to the Apparatus Bay, and put a two-story modular building with a allowance for temporary housing of the firefighters, for $3.4 million. Project timeline, it's a lot, it's a very busy chart, but some of the major milestones, if we get approval tonight, we will be putting this project out to bid in about a month. Public bidding, right around March 17. It's projected that the production of the building will begin. May 5 of next year, the modular building will be transported to the site of 35 Princeton Street. In July 13, substantial completion and occupancy is expected. That concludes my portion, and I thank you in advance for consideration of this project.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. I'd just like to take a moment just to explain some of the financial information related to the fire station project. If this article is approved tonight, the town would issue a 20-year municipal bond for $3.4 million. And just to help you understand how this article and the next article that will be discussing would fit within the town's non-excluded debt service schedule. If you look at this slide, the, on the left, you have the, there's a fiscal year, and then the next column in the middle is the outstanding debt service. What that column shows is the outstanding debt service right now for all of the non-excluded bonds that we have currently issued. And so to give you some historical perspective, last year, the amount of, the total amount of non-excluded debt service for the town, the town had was $7.54 million in going down, going down that list for each year. If you look at the projected column, that assumes that the fire station project that we're discussing is approved, and also, the capital will be discussed in the next article. So the projected debt service shows the cost, what it would be, what the non-excluded debt service would be if both of these projects are approved. And you can see that both of these can be accomplished without causing any spikes or dramatic increases on our non-excluded debt service. There's a couple of reasons for that. The existing or outstanding debt service that we have now is declining. The reasons for that are, we'll be paying off each of these years in this 10-year projection. In fiscal year 22, for example, the police station, which many of us think of as still a newer building, that will be completely, the bond will be completely retired or paid off, and several other older years, capital plans will also be retired in the years ahead. So you can see that if this project is approved, in fiscal year 21, the total debt service would be $7.45 million, which is just about $85,000 less than where we were last year with our non-excluded debt service. In fiscal year 22, the projected debt service would be $6.92 million, which will be about $537,000 left, and so on. So just to try to give you an understanding of how these projects will fit within our current debt service schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. So, does the Finance Committee have any recommendation with regard...
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 9.
And does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of four in favor, zero against, one absent for Article 9.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
My other question, Cantasi Precinct 2. Has anyone addressed the abutters and let them know that you're going to a second story?
Well, we presented, this is probably my third or fourth presentation... Well, we presented, this is probably my third or fourth presentation, public notice has been put out there. If you look at social media, I think it's been well documented. Has it formal publication? No, we have not. But we have talked to the neighbors on Washington Street.
All right. It would have been nice, though, to give the, because you have one on Gay Street and you have Washington Street. And actually, the one on Gay Street is, is just as important as the one on Washington Street that you got to talk to. I just feel that you should have sent a notice to either one of them so they could have a say.
So as you're aware, we had neighbors who come to have talked to us, and we have talked about this project. We can't bite the man, obviously, because of COVID, but we're, you know, we've been out publicly on social media. I presented this probably my third or fourth time. But yes, I, I get your point.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Grand Precinct 2. I, I just have a question or two. I just wonder, is there been an increase in fire calls over the last 10 years?
Increase in what?
Amount of calls over the last 10 years for that fire station?
Yes.
By how much? I guess, no, it's a lot of money, you know?
It is a lot of money. I agree.
How much have the fire calls increased in the last 10 years?
Well, I think I presented that before the finance committee last year. If I recall, we probably, Engine 2 is the busiest station. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but we've ranged just townwide, 66 to over 7,000 calls, 27 or 8% of that originate out of Engine 2.
And then how long will these modules last?
Gary, you want to help me out there? How long do these last? Forty, 40 years. It's going to be put on a permanent slab. So if you look at our elementary schools, they were put on the permanent slab, so they have about a lifespan of 40 years.
The elementary schools, I heard 25 years. And, no, that's, that's the biggest thing. I just haven't seen that. I, I live in North Chelmsford, and I appreciate, you know, a few emergencies that I've had, you guys have been right there, you know? But I find that's a lot of money. Now, I have to pay taxes, I live there.
And I, I, I agree with you. It is a lot of money, and it's a very difficult time to be bringing this forward. But at the same time, I do think this is the time, because we, we are in a pandemic, and, and in particular, that issue of the bedrooms, not the only issue, but I think it's an important issue. It's an important health and safety issue. So I do agree, it's, it's a lot of money to ask people, and I do appreciate their consideration of this article.
And the other is, why increase? You know, we're a built-out town. Why, why increase the size of the fire station?
Because I think if you look, in particularly, the gear storage room, right now, it's not complying with today's codes. It hangs, you're hanging very expensive gear, and we had a Warren article earlier for the appropriation, appropriation of bunker gear. It's hanging on a hook exposed to daylight, and it off-gas. It, it absorbs, you know, materials, carcinogens. It's supposed to be in a separate room. It's supposed to be washed. It's supposed to have its separate ventilation. We don't have that in any station except for the fire headquarters.
But why six bedrooms?
Six bedrooms allows us the ability to expand coverage if we have an emergency, if we have a snowstorm, strong winds like we had a couple of weeks ago, more, more recently, the pandemic. We've had a few times, and I think our firefighters have done a fantastic job, and I thank them for it, of keeping us safe. However, from time to time, and it's happened, we've had to shut the station down to decon the fire apparatus and the fire station. And most recently, that station was closed for that reason. So if that happens at night, right now, the only recourse I have is to bring some of the firefighters into the center. This will give me another option to maybe bring them out to Engine 2, which is the, again, outside of the center is the busiest station we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So maybe it's just a comment, have you, or question here, but have you, what kind of heating system would go on in the firing, fire station?
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
What kind of heating system for space heating, you know, regular heating for the winter? Would that be a gas furnace or a high-efficiency gas furnace?
Yes, it would be natural gas, correct.
Okay. We just adopted a values and vision statement that includes sustainability. So might I suggest that you look at geothermal as an option, which might be slightly larger, bigger money, but if there's state and feds are giving any kind of discount on that, that you look at it and look at it from a carbon footprint standpoint, you're, you're doing a good job in terms of looking at it from solar panels, but extend that to the heating system, which is also a much big component of contribution there.
I've seen your presentations before, the town, and I know you're, you're very passionate about it. I am. We just had that discussion today.
So please do what's required, and if it's additional money, make sure that it is, because it's a bonus point to planning ahead for the future.
I understand. And if you look at the Acton Fire Station, they're doing that right now. You're paying more money upfront, but it's got about an eight-year payback.
So I'm hoping that's included as part of the, we move from a gas system to a geothermal system. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Joy Zahrul is Precinct 3. During the construction phase, will the parking lot still be accessible for functions for the town hall? Has that been taken into consideration?
No, we will keep that open.
You're going to keep it open.
We understand how important that center is.
It is, because, you know, the parking situation up there, that definitely helps.
No, we understand.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Oak, Precinct 6. One question I have is, I think all, some of the other fire stations are in similar level, like similar age to. Have you looked into at all either consolidating something like the fire stations or like a larger plan than just renovating each one? Like, could we keep, if we dedicated like resources to four stations instead of five, could we keep response times the same or anything like that? I'm just kind of curious what the master plan looks like for a lot of the other stations.
So my, one of my, the, the first slide talks about criteria associates. The town brought them in last year. They looked at that exact issue. And they looked at it for, obviously, the conditions of the station, but also for staffing. Most of these stations have two firefighters. Your life safety code calls for four. And the reason behind that, if you have a fire, and there's a liability on the town, on me, that if the fire truck gets there, if you have a, what do you call it, an immediate dangerous-to-life-and-health environment, you need to have two firefighters who go in, but you have to have two firefighters that go out. So that group looked at that issue. They looked at, and they ran different models based on three and a half years of response calls that I presented. They looked at the response times, and they presented the select board various options, five stations, four stations, three stations, and how quickly we can meet those calls, you know, and expand staffing. So yes, that, that was looked at.
Okay. It looked like from the history, too, a lot of the calls are more for health or medical reasons, and this, like, fire calls are almost static for the, for the last, like, five years, it looked like, when I looked online, but maybe the statistics just weren't updated, so.
Well, certainly, medicals are a large part of what we do.
Yeah. So as we renovate buildings and stuff, are we taking that into consideration, too, that a majority of the calls may be like more medical-related than fire-related or?
The, the study looked at not only that type of response, but also where those calls are. So it would show, like, they would show heat signatures. So for us in the town of Chelmsford, it would be Technology Drive, Drum Hill, Route 3, Route 3 South, Drum Hill, in, in portions of the center.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sam Fulton, Precinct 8, through the moderator to the presenter. Looking at this, it, it appears that there are two reasons that this is before us. One, to address inadequacies, and the other expansion, is that a correct way to interpret this, that there are presently inadequacies?
These stations are lacking in many modern items that you would find at the station, and obviously, we don't have the ability to expand staffing. I think that what, that drove this study. That drove the study from last year.
And we're certainly not compliant in a mixed-gender fire station at, at present with the bunkhouse style. Is that correct?
The, the report noted that this, our, outside-of-the-center station, it was designed for single-gender workforce.
And a maximum of two people?
Maximum of two people, correct.
Okay. With, with that information, is it appropriate to speak for or against at this point? You could start the clock.
Your honor.
Based on everything I've heard, it appears that we've got a very excellent, well-thought-out plan that is going to be almost $2 million less than it could be. And I think this is the right time to do that. We must step into the 21st century. We have a station that's over 60 years old, single gender, which doesn't exist anymore in the future of firefighting. And I think all the safety issues that were mentioned certainly need to be addressed, especially during the pandemic. I think this is a great way to become compliant for free, is the way I look at it. We're able to expand, or either the expansion is free or coming into compliance is free, but the combination of both for $3,400,000 for that size building, I think is an excellent bargain. I'm going to vote yes. I encourage everyone to pass this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Kathy Tuberty, Precinct 1. I'm Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Can you explain the process? So if we approve this tonight, you're going to release an RFP, and then what happens?
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
You release an RFP, a request for proposal, you get bids back?
That is projected to go about, about a month, yes. We have to go through the request for proposal process. Our DPW director here could probably explain that a lot better than I can. Gary, if you want to touch on it, please?
Good evening. It'll be no different than any renovations we do to any major buildings within the town. We'll put out the RFP. When the RFP is completed, we will review it, we'll pick the bidder that wins it, and then they will start the formation of the buildings offsite because they are modular. And during that time, we will start to construct the temporary living for the firefighters, which will be at the rear of the property. And at the same time, they may start some of the easier tasks in the existing apparatus. They won't be able to get too deep into that until the bedrooms are built and they're out of there, but we will get some of that done to get a start on it. The biggest thing for us within this thing is getting the temporary quarters done right, because the fire department, of course, has to have all the needs met of communication and all of that during the fact of it. So we will be running a temporary service completely out to the pods during that period. And as Gary had said earlier, we are looking at it probably about an eight-month turnaround time. If we were to stick build this, along with being $2 million more, it would be at least another four to five months more. And it would also put the trucks outside during part of the winter months. This plan allows us to, to put the trucks outside in the warmer weather so that it should not affect them.
Thank you. So the reason I asked that question was, I'm sorry, but it's not a very attractive building as currently designed. So when you send it out for RFP, are you going to allow the, the freedom to be able to, to look a little bit better? I appreciate that you guys need space. I'm not disputing any of that. I'm just.
The thought is to match, of course, the existing brick structure that will stay up with brick on a, on a two-story that goes in. Normally, we will hopefully get the power wash and seal the existing, sort of it all blends in better and gives that brick that's been there for years more life into it by doing that.
I asked that you maybe pull the, the neighborhood as you, somebody asked previously, because it's not a very attractive building, and as a two-story, it's even less attractive. So I, I encourage an opportunity for, for feedback or also from the, the bidders, maybe to give them that flexibility to maybe be a little creative and make it look better. Thank you.
Cantasi Precinct 2, through the moderator to the speaker. Since the abutters are going to be hit with, with the second, my, I have no problem with the fire station. I have an issue with the, I know that not all the abutters have been talked to, but the reality, too, is they're going to, privacy is going to be an issue, and light pollution will also be an issue. Have you thought of, like, putting more trees in or somehow working with, in the back, the two homes that abut that property to help out in that situation?
Well, I think we're mindful, in particular, when we did the municipal lot, we've had those discussions with the neighbors, in particular, the lights village, because I was part of that, working with the group. So I don't see a change in that process that we would take communicating with the neighbors. That's important. As far as the landscape, I would, I don't have the answer to that, but I don't see that, that mindset, that process that we've had when we did 50 Borekka Road, reaching out to the neighbors. It's important. It's an impact to the neighborhood, and I think we will have that same reach out. I know it's important. I know it, there's going to be some disruption, some noise. We will try to minimize that. But certainly, you're part of our neighborhood. We will bring you winter to fall, you're part of the process.
Okay. Well, I, I can tell you for the fact that on, one of the neighbors are newer to our community, and they weren't there for the, for the negotiate, when the parking lot got put in. They're newer people to the town. So I do, I think that there should be some type of way to mitigate the sound, not just the sound, but more so the light pollution and for them not to lose their privacy, because they ended up putting a fence, and the fence was a big deal when they did the parking lot. So I would like to see something on, on the town's behalf to help out with those situations with those two particular neighbors, because they are directly in back when you go to a second level.
Sure. We recently reached out to them when they had an issue with, what they thought was an issue with rats in there. They thought it was from our dumpster, and turns out, we weren't even using a dumpster. We haven't been using a dumpster. But they felt comfortable coming to us. We had that meeting, we had that discussion, and I don't see that changing with this project.
Have you tried anything to, like, tenting the windows or anything is, are you willing to do this?
We will certainly take a look at that. We did that with 50 Borekka Road. That was a concern, the lights village. So we did tent the windows, and I think it adequately addressed the issue. So certainly something we will be, we're mindful of it, and we will certainly try to work with the neighbors to address those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct 5. I want to tell you why this is going to be a very good project to do for the town. Number one, safety is one of the most important things. Thank you, Zach.
I think you got to vote.
You say, every, if I say that word again, is anything going to beep?
I'll give you a few extra seconds, Mr. Thorne.
So, safety is one of the most important things for the town. Okay, it wasn't that then. And, and it, it appears clear to me that you have taken a good, hard look at occupying the minimum floor space with the improvement. You've taken a 65-year-old building and brought it into modern times. I suspect there weren't many women firefighters in 1956. And if the pictures are an accurate representation of the interior of the building, it needs to be improved, and I think tearing it down is the best improvement you could make. Now, I know that the modular design that you have, people think of modular designs as very temporary, but modern technology and modular design lasts for decades. So I assume this building is set up to last for decades with the improvements you're making. The thing that was most interesting was the final price compared to other fire station improvements in our neighboring area in Massachusetts that are two times, three times as expensive. You've done a good job to use a new approach that will expand the ability of the station to accept more people in an emergency and still keep the space for the equipment. So I would strongly urge town meeting to support this because it's been well thought through, it's been priced at a reasonable amount, and it does. through, it's been priced at a reasonable amount, and it does something that needs to be done, because a fire station located there is an excellent location, as you've seen in your previous fire station studies. I know we've discussed Precinct Five, South Fire Station before, but this is definitely a well-located place for the fire station. I think this improvement's going to make a big difference, and it happens rapidly, so we won't be putting our firefighters and the town in a position where we're, you know, in temporary housing too long. So I, I want to thank you for doing a good job, because reading it carefully, it's very clear that this is a good way to get the fire station you need back into this century. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none. This requires a two-thirds vote. We are voting on authorizing the borrowing of $3.4 million for the renovation and expansion of the North Fire Station.
And a two-thirds vote is what the town moderator is after. This is a, a problem with some of the buildings that we have here in town, they were built during the 50s and 60s when the town experienced rapid expansion. And, and now those buildings are getting old and needing some kind of TLC. As you can see, the vote is overwhelmingly in favor of this, and I think Chief Ryan made a very good presentation on his department's behalf. That's helped pave the way for this popular vote.
The article passes, 118 in favor, three opposed, one abstention. Mr. Moderator, uh, Mr.?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know it's a very difficult time, and I thank you for your support, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Manager?
Article 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 10, as I mentioned in my introductory remarks, is an article pertaining to capital appropriations which were deferred at the spring annual town meeting back in June. I'm going to turn the podium over to John Souza, our finance director, who chairs the capital planning committee for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, good evening. As we said with the last time we gathered here back in June, that we would, at Fall Town Meeting, we would take another look at many of these high priority requests that were deferred back at that time, just due to difficulties with the, having visibility with finances and the budget, given all that's gone on in the world with the pandemic. This slide shows a summary of the five high priority projects that we're bringing before you this evening, and I'll go through a little more detail in each of these. This, this slide just shows the breakout of the projects by, by department. There's two for Public Works, one for a fire department, and then also two school facilities projects. The total of all the projects is 1.978 million. Under Public Works, we're seeking $350,000 for sidewalk construction and repair. One area in particular would be Bill Ricker Road at Chelmsford Street. Also, $400,000 is requested for roadway improvements, and this includes an update for our pavement management survey. We're an engineering firm, rates all the roadways, and prioritizes those for future repair and work. Possible roads to be repaired or renovated would include Katrina Road, Jordan Road, Church Street, and others. Touched on this a little bit in earlier, in some earlier presentations. $115,000 is requested to replace firefighting turnout gear. This says, the picture implies this is all of the personal protective equipment that firefighters wear, such as helmets, gloves, coats, pants, hoods, et cetera, when they respond to calls for service. This would purchase approximately 44 helmets and 44 complete sets for firefighters. Under School Facilities, two projects. The first one is the, the complete renovation of the kitchen at Parker Middle School. This is a, as the town manager mentioned early, this is actually a great time for this project to take place. I want to give credit to our facilities and public works director and his collaboration with our school superintendent and his staff for bringing the cost of this project down from an earlier estimate, so the reason being that with, with school schedule being what it is, and food is not currently being served here, the, the renovation can take place in one whole project and not have to do pieces at a time and try to maintain the operation and, and, you know, conduct the renovation in phases either during the summer or various parts. And with the, the kitchen not being in operation, that, that's a great help in this project. So this will completely renovate the Parker School Kitchen. Finally, the last project is the McCarthy Middle School Auditorium renovation. The price tear is $740,000. As many of you know, McCarthy opened in the late 50s, and while repairs have certainly been made over the years as needed, this is the first total renovation to that auditorium facility since the school opened. And you can see in the lower left corner of the slide, the scope of work, you can see some of the major components of this project include the lighting system, a new audiovisual system, seating, flooring, painting, et cetera, a sound booth. And that's something that we felt that this is another project that, since the auditorium isn't currently being used for, in the current environment, this is another, this is another great time to be able to do this, especially with interest rates being what they are right now. So that concludes the projects. Just to, just to give you a sense of how this all fits together, when we met in June, the initial FY '21 capital request was for 1.475 million. The projects that we're seeking your approval for tonight is 1.978 million. So the total amount of FY '21 capital will be just over 3.45 million. Keeping in mind that in the, you know, we have, as we discussed tonight, we have a lot of older buildings and aging facilities in towns, and our future capital needs, just to give you some perspective, for fiscal year '22, certainly we'll be working on prioritizing these in, in the months ahead. But in the, all of the, this shows all of the projects that are currently in the capital planning pipeline. You can see that for FY '22, it's 6.3 million, and it go out through fiscal year '25, that all of the projects that have been previously submitted are 18.85 million. So it gives you a sense of why we need to continue to make investments in capital, capital facilities in the, in the years ahead. An important note is, at this time, we're, we're just starting the capital planning process for another whole year, and the numbers that you're seeing on this slide do not include any requests for fiscal year '26. So you have to, those will be added on in a future date, but just to give you a, just to give you perspective of the magnitude of capital needs in our town in the, in the years ahead. So that concludes my presentation for this article, thank you.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 10.
Does the select board have a recommendation?
The select board recommends approval by a vote of four in favor, zero against, and one absent of Article 10.
Thank you. Now's an opportunity for anyone to ask questions or to comment on this request.
Cantasi, Precinct Two, through the moderator to the speaker. I do like this, I like the idea that you can do this, especially with the prevailing wage in the schools with less time. I do like that, it's excellent. I do have one little comment about this, though. I really wish that when we go to get articles like this, they'd be individualized, so we can vote them individually instead of a package deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none. This requires a two-thirds vote, so all in favor of Article 10, which authorizes the borrowing of 1.978 million dollars for capital improvements, and seeks appropriation of 396,337 to fund the fiscal year 2021 debt service payment. Please vote yes, if you're opposed, vote no.
And it's interesting that one of the things up for this capital improvement, again, these are holdovers from the Spring Town Meeting, is the renovation of McCarthy Auditorium. Those of you who've moved into town within, say, the last 30 years, probably don't remember that town meeting used to be held in the McCarthy Auditorium. At that time, it was open town meeting, there weren't reps, elected reps as we have now.
The article passes, 115 in favor, five opposed, one abstention.
And it could be a very crowded place.
And this is a citizen's petition.
Good evening. I'm actually standing in for Paul Regazio, who wrote these articles, so I'm going to read a statement from him. "Greetings, town meeting reps from Paul Regazio, Precinct Three. My apologies for not attending this important Fall Town Meeting. My entire family, my wife, adult children, and seven grandchildren implored me not to attend in view of my age, a few, a few days short of 82 years old, with a medical condition which puts me at high risk category for COVID-19. Thanks to my friend Brian Latina for standing in for me tonight." It's hard to smile with the mask on. "For those who don't know me, I'm a 51-year-old resident of Chelmsford, where we raised our four children to adulthood, and now has their own family. My work career included being a licensed CPA and international controller for a local national, multinational company. I'm very experienced in dealing with the one-twos and threes and with annual budgets. Also, I'm the proud author, a few years ago, of the amendment to reduce the funding of our initial Chelmsford Surface Water Department, saving the town $2 million at that town meeting. My overall objective back in August of 2020, when your four town warrants were filed, was to eliminate the usual 2.5% tax increase included in this, in the approved budget. That is about $2.5 million, or about $200 per resident. The increase is now only about $1 million, or about $70 per residence, due to the higher-than-expected state, state funding than originally estimated. Also, $1.4 million sur, also a $1.4 million surplus, or so-called free cash, from last year's fiscal year has now been certified, but amazingly, the town wants to bury this in the ground by adding it to the stabilization fund, which would then total designated, total designated fund as a rainy day fund to almost $11 million. My first warrant is to apply $1 million of this free cash to reduce the 2021-22 property tax assessment. And the second article is to apply the balance of about $400,000 against the tax assessment. Their approval would actually result in a small tax decrease from last year. Is there a law against tax decreases? These warrants, more importantly, more important than that the small individual tax savings would put $1.4 million back to our, into our local economy. Helping our residents and your local small businesses, why bury it in a bank account now? Remember, this is our money, not the town's, and we should decide how to spend it. Remember, over the past several years, the town has never returned a significant free cash back to the taxpayers. Instead, they spend most of it. That is not right then, and it's definitely not right now in the middle of a pandemic. Please help our local residents and our local businesses by approving these warrant articles. The savings in this is to, is to try to generate, take that cash that we didn't budget for in our town's original budget in the spring, put it back in the hands of you and our taxpaying residents, and let you spend it here locally. The federal government did this with $3 trillion in the federal money, and the whole idea was to keep our economy going at a worldwide and national level. This funding, $1 million, is arguably is not even 100 bucks. What would you do with 100 bucks? He says it's about 70. You would take that and you might go to a restaurant, or you might buy a mask. And I, I would, I would suggest that it's not just the town employees and the rest that need to buy masks and things. Our kids, our kids need pandemic relief as well. We're looking at expenditures of 130 some odd million dollars in our town. This $1 million returned to our taxpayers would go right back into our local economy, and it would get spread around. This is the idea the federal government came up with, and we're struggling now to get a little bit more. And I'll leave you with this thought. Our local businesses during the pandemic, 220 some odd days so far, furloughed or laid off employees. Some of us may be laid off in the next few months. I don't believe we lost any municipal employees to furloughs or layoffs. I think most of the businesses that you see around town, when they stopped working, were not paid. The local small businesses didn't receive additional funding and continue with the budget that they had. Our town did, thankfully. It took care of our families, in our, in our local employees and municipal, municipal government, but the local businesses didn't act that way. We, we had heard that, from the town manager, that we generated about 98 point some odd percent of our property taxes. So whether you lost your job or were furloughed at your home in Chelmsford here, you still, you still paid your taxes, so the town was able to maintain its budget. This $1.4 million in the first warrant, Article, Article 11, is for $1 million to be, returned to the taxpayers, simple as that. That money would be spent here. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee unanimously recommends against approval of Article 11.
Does the select board have a recommendation?
The select board voted one in favor, three against for Article 11, I'm sorry, and one absent for Article 11.
Thank you. Now's the time for questions or discussion.
Will Wagner, precinct date. Mr. Moderator, through you to either the finance committee or the town manager. If this money is not returned to the citizens as requested, and it goes into the fund, the stabilization fund, what exactly is the stabilization fund used for?
Under Massachusetts general law, the stabilization fund can be used for any lawful purpose. It requires a two-thirds vote to remove money from the stabilization fund, a majority vote to put money into the stabilization fund.
So the stabilization fund would go up to about approximately $11 million with this $1 million out of free cash, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we could then use that for whatever lawful purpose the town meeting, through the two-thirds vote, decides to use it for?
That's correct.
So the money gets, and I'm going into discuss, discussion now. So the money gets used by the town as determined by us at town meeting. I urge people to vote against this article. I, I don't think that it was well thought. I believe that the $1 million going into our fund for use as town meeting sees fit is more important than a minor refund at the moment. And we are looking at a large amount of money that we are spending to improve our town facilities. If our town at some point needs to draw from the stabilization fund to pay back some of those costs, we can deem it so through town meeting, and I don't believe that this would be beneficial to anyone in the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Sillings, seven, area seven. What I'm concerned of, of how many people didn't get their What I'm concerned of, how many people didn't get their full jobs this year?
Excuse me, are you in debate now?
Am I what?
No, are you going to ask a question, or should I start the timer for you to explain what your position is on the warrant article?
Yeah, I'm going to tell you why I'm concerned.
Thank you.
And I don't think that money should be there. I wanted to say that I've experienced this about 10 years, this, I've gone extra, and I've gone for it. I thought it was the right thing. This year, a lot of people didn't have jobs. They were building, and all of a sudden, they weren't building. They didn't get jobs, or maybe teaching. So this is a special year, and I don't think we've taken extra money from these people who didn't get jobs this year. And I think we should drop those.
Thank you.
Nancy Arroway, precinct one. Mr. Moderator, a question, I think the Finance Committee threw you.
Certainly.
If we pass this, what would we expect to see next year in terms of tax increases? How would it proportionately change?
Well, based upon our discussions with the Town Treasurer and the Town Manager, a further decrease in the FY '21 tax may lead to a much larger jump in taxes in fiscal year '22 if the town needs to tax to its full levy capacity, which it's not doing this year, in order to meet its operating needs. So essentially, if we have a further decrease this year, there could be a much greater increase in the coming years based upon fiscal uncertainty that we're facing.
Will we have a limitation on how much can be increased because we haven't made that increase this year?
We can tax to the full levy each year under Prop. 2.5. We have not taxed to this year's full capacity. However, it does not mean that the full capacity is lost. So essentially, next year, there could be a much greater increase if the needs are necessary in order to fund the operating budget, which I might add, we took $2 million from the stabilization fund in the spring of this year to fund.
Can I ask why Finance Committee voted against this article?
I can certainly read you what we wrote in our Finance Committee book. So essentially, first, due to anticipated funds available to the town from greater-than-expected state aid, the fiscal year '21 levy limit has not been reached, and the town, as I said, has excess levy capacity. But because the fiscal year '21 operating budget is not being amended at this town meeting to make use of this excess capacity, which it could have been, a smaller-than-anticipated increase in individual property taxes will result, essentially providing for a property tax relief for this fiscal year. Second, we remain in uncertain times, and we are likely to see fiscal impacts in the pandemic in the coming years. A further decrease to the fiscal year '21 taxes may lead to a much larger jump, as I mentioned, in taxes in fiscal year '22 if the town needs to tax to its full capacity in order to meet its operating needs. Third, because of continued uncertainty, we must plan conservatively now for known increases arriving in fiscal year '22 and beyond, as was stated earlier in the financial forecast, including retirement expenses, trash contracts, collective bargaining, and contract increases, and increased capital needs, just to name a few. Finally, as I mentioned just previously, $2 million of our stabilization fund was used as a result of planning through spring annual town meeting in order to offset anticipated shortfalls in our operating budget for fiscal year '21. We believe that whenever possible, those funds should be returned so that they are available to use when needed. Additionally, the stabilization fund contributes to our bond rating, as was stated in the previous fiscal report by our Treasurer, and should be maintained at target levels, which is 5% to 10% of the operating budget.
That was a lot. At the risk of putting words in your mouth, could I summarize that?
Excuse me, do you have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, but don't make it argumentative.
It's not argumentative.
Well, when you say you're going to put words in their mouth, I'm concerned.
I just want a clarification. Could that be summarized to say that in these uncertain times, it's a good thing to have an insurance policy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine McDonald, precinct one. I'm not sure who I should direct this question to, Mr. Moderator, so you could point me in the right direction, please. Is the stabilization fund somewhat invested, and does it earn a return?
I guess the correct person to ask is Mr. Souza.
Yes, the stabilization fund, we have investment advisors that assist me with that. It's invested, I give you just rough terms, about 80% is invested in fixed income investments, approximately 15% is invested in equities or stocks that are permitted on the legal list under the Commonwealth of Mass laws, and then roughly, this fluctuates, but roughly 5% is in cash or money market-type mutual funds.
So a follow-up question to Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, Mr. Souza. I'm not supposed to say names. So $1 million would make roughly what in interest? I understand this is an estimate and only just a guesstimate.
Yes, last year, we earned, it was just over 3%, it was about 3.1% return on all of our assets in stabilization.
So for $1 million, that would be how much?
Last year, we earned, fiscal year '21, just over $347,000.
On the whole stabilization fund that you had? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Oak, precinct six. I just have another question about if we don't return money to the stabilization fund. We had mentioned earlier about risking, I think the Standard and Poor is kind of double-A rating. Is that at risk at all if we don't return these funds to the stabilization fund?
Mr. Moderator, answer the previous speaker's question. It's difficult for me as Treasurer to say that Standard and Poor is going to absolutely lower the bond rating, however, what they do is they look at trends. And so if you're asking, you know, the concern would be, so Standard and Poor asks, each year, we do a conference call with them, and one of the things that they would look at, they can see that we've, because this is all public information, they can see that we've withdrawn $2.2 million to support the fiscal year '21 budget. Then they would then ask, do you plan to withdraw or need to support the '22 budget? And the answer would be yes. And so then they would say, okay, well, what are your plans to try to replenish any of that? And I think that's what you would get if we look like we're just doing withdrawals, but we're not making any deposits to try to replenish the fund. I think that would cause them some concern over time.
Because there is a risk of them seeing that as a negative trend, so it sounds like. My personal opinion on this is, I mean, since moving to Chelmsford, the taxes seem to go up by 2.5% automatically every year, and we should take opportunities to return it to folks if we have it. That's just what I think, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorin, precinct five, start the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Thorin.
Thank you. I urge the town meeting to vote against this article, and here's why. I remember not too many years ago, when there was a different town manager in Chelmsford, we had a continuous depletion of the stabilization account till it was almost gone. And that certainly didn't improve our bond rating. It clearly made us a much less flexible town so that we could not do some things we wanted to do because we had no reserve fund. Keeping this money in the stabilization fund, putting it in the stabilization fund is not burying it in the ground. It is clearly an indication of fiscal responsibility that allows a town to have the ability to fund things that are large numbers by taking money from the stabilization fund with a two-thirds vote. Majority to put it in, two-thirds to take it out. Easy to put it in, a lot harder to take it out. So the town has to be convinced that any use of the stabilization fund is a proper use of our saved money. And nobody likes to pay more taxes, I certainly don't, but to remove the flexibility from the town to be able to pay for certain things that need to be done, whether it's purchasing of property or rebuilding the infrastructure, I think would be a serious mistake. So I urge you to vote against this to maintain a stabilization fund that has taken quite a while for the town to build up. When you start removing money from the stabilization fund, even for a good purpose, like returning it to the voters, you're getting into the possibility of creating a trend like we had seen some years ago. Many town meeting reps have been here for a long time, like I have, and as that stabilization fund goes down, and goes down, and goes down, you know, you say, well, it's no big deal, right? But it is a big deal because it removes the flexibility of the town to put the money to good use. And if we believe the town is not spending money wisely, then issue by issue, we can address that. But if you have no stabilization fund, or it's shrinking or trending downward, then there is a lot less to discuss. And I don't want to be in a position where we have to hustle to build it back up when we can maintain a stabilization fund at 7%, 7.5%, 8% where it should be on a year-to-year basis. So I urge town meeting to vote against this article, to maintain the fiscal stability of the town, allow the town to have the flexibility to do the things we need to do in the future when large expenses come up.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and start the clock. Brian Latina, precinct four. I know $100 isn't much to the town, but I think it's a lot to people that are in the middle of a pandemic. The stabilization fund was designed to stabilize the town's budget in the event of a problem, a huge problem in this case, is a pandemic, folks. This is a rainy day fund to be used in an emergency. And you know what happened this year? We ended up with a couple hundred dollars extra in our regular budget. The free cash money that we're talking about here, $1.4 million, is found money. It's not part of our budget. So we're going to take the extra money that came in because somebody bought a car, or they didn't lose their job, or they weren't furloughed, or because of the way we do our taxes in our town, 98% of all of your property taxes were paid to the town, and we made our budget. I got to tell you that there are people in this room probably that have lost their jobs, or a portion of them, in the last 220 days. And there's a portion of the folks in this room and our town residents that will lose their jobs in the next six months. So this money rolling back into our local economy could certainly help the little pizza joint across from the library? Chelmsford Card &amp; Gift? Maybe our liquor store? Maybe even the grocery store, although they'd do pretty well. The businesses that happened in the last 220 days that lost their local employees were not town municipal employees. I don't think the lunch ladies didn't get paid, but I guarantee you, the folks over at the local Papaginos that were hourly employees didn't get paid when they weren't in the room.
Less than one minute.
So all we're saying here is, don't take the residents' extra funds available and plow it into the rainy day fund. Thank God, this federal government didn't do that. They took $3 trillion, they printed this stuff, and they passed it out so that we wouldn't all lose our jobs in the last 220 days. So I'm advocating for you to take $1 million, about 100 bucks, give it back to each one of you in this room, and spend it in Chelmsford. That's the advocacy that Paul Regazio has put this warrant article in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Ginger Scoog, precinct six. You can start the clock.
Thank you.
While I can understand the emotional pull of the argument that Mr. Regazio and, or the article author and the previous presenter have made, the thing that you're not addressing here is, we cannot guarantee how this money is spent. This money can be given back to the people in Chelmsford who have paid their money into the town on good faith, and they can take it and order their mask on Amazon. Not get it at the Artisans Exchange, not eat at a local restaurant. They can go up to Nashua. There is no way for us to guarantee that this money that we would distribute back out would be used here in Chelmsford. However, if that money is put into the stabilization fund and an article is brought to town meeting to use that $1.4 million for, oh, I don't know, sidewalks, for our kids to be able to walk to school because we can't do buses anymore? Or maybe to improve our school buildings so that they're not so crowded, so that more of our children can be in the school building at a time? It's a false sense of security that you are giving to people with this idea that you're going to give them $70 and they're going to save a business downtown. If you build a sidewalk, they can walk to that business, and they're probably going to be much more likely to spend the money they were already going to spend locally.
One minute.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm assuming you don't have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. That's a comment, two comments, because that led to me to come up to this microphone. First off is the issue of furloughs in town employees. I'm proud of what our town employees have done and continue to do under this pandemic. I've never seen the Board of Health work as hard and as diligent, and our public safety crews, and everyone else to address the needs in the communities. And quite frankly, you know, it really speaks to the quality of the people that we have that serve this community. But during the pandemic, when things were shut down, we did furlough employees. But the bottom line is, we couldn't do widespread furloughs because unlike a restaurant that got 30% of its business, we still had 100% of the demand on the community, if not greater demand during this pandemic. And that goes from the police officers, the firefighters, the Board of Health, the schools, and the community in which they're serving special education students, and hybrid learning, and everything else. So I really think it was important to come up here and defend the town employees and explain why they haven't been furloughed, because darn it, they're working harder than ever, and they should be applauded for their efforts. Second, the... As I said earlier in my opening remarks, the impacts economically to this pandemic are not limited to this fiscal year. Our goal as the Finance Director, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and so forth, is to bring us through this entire crisis, not just this fiscal year. And if you look at what the governor did last week, he didn't utilize the entire state's rainy day fund. He basically took, you know, a couple billion out of the state's rainy day fund to get us through this fiscal year, and he made it real loud and clear, and it was agreed to by the legislative leadership. The challenges in '21 are going to be exceeded by the challenges in the following year, and that's the reason that I'm asking in the following article to put the fund in the stabilization fund so we can address the needs of the community, not only this year, but in the following year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anybody else, so we're going to be voting on transferring $1 million from free cash to reduce the fiscal year 2021 property tax. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, vote no.
And it comes down to this vote, you see a lot of red there on the display.
And it comes down to this, this vote, you see a lot of red there on the display suggesting that Town Meeting reps are not persuaded by the argument that the million dollars of free cash money ought to be returned to residents because they have ostensibly overpaid what they expected for this fiscal year's budget. It's a cogent argument that we need the stabilization fund not so much for this year, but for next year.
The article fails. Twenty-three in favor, 96 opposed, no extensions.
And it'll remain to be seen what happens.
Article 12.
Articles 12, 13, and 14 are of the same ilk.
I could repeat what Paul had written here. However, this article is for $400,000, a little less than half of the million dollars first Town residents do have a right to live in our town. We do have a right not to hit the 2.5% tax levy that is allowed by Proposition 2.5. And my, my challenge to the folks here as part of the presentation is if not now, when would you give back the extra funds to your town residents that you represent? If not in the middle of a pandemic, then when? When it, when our taxes are, are very high and we have lots of money coming in, we don't give any back. When we're in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, people have lost their jobs, they're struggling from day to day, they're visiting the pantry behind the town hall to pick up groceries? If not now, when? It's a trivial amount. It's about, it's about $35 that we're asking to give back to the town residents in the middle of a pandemic. I would ask that you consider that when you talk to your, your local residents. And while I appreciate the town manager's ability to maintain our budget and not furlough...
I'm sorry?
I'm presenting.
It's, it's his, it's his presentation. He can, he can argue in favor of it. Go ahead, Mr. Latina.
While I appreciate us not furloughing our town employees, lion's share of people that live in Chelmsford that had jobs in the lower echelons, in the working class that we have in our town, were very likely furloughed. The lucky ones of us that were able to work from home probably maintained our salaries, but you could be impacted by the pandemic, and you certainly could be in the, in the next couple of years. This doesn't hurt our current budget, and to project into 2022 is not best what we do. We're looking at this year's budget, we're looking at money that was found certified by the state from this year that was extra, extra money that was not part of our budget. All I'm suggesting is, if not during a pandemic, folks, when your taxes double, as they have in the last 10 years, your property tax doubles, then all the found money going into it as well, above Prop 2.5, is what we're talking about here. My suggestion is, give back the found money in the middle of a pandemic and give folks a little bit of a break. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends against approval of Article 12.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board voted one in favor, three against, and one absent, in reference to Article 12.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner?
Will Wagner, Precinct Eight again. Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Meeting. This seems like a, a sad attempt at double dipping. The, the first article failed, and this article seems like a, a secondary, well, we didn't get as much as we want, so let's try it again with a little bit less. This seems kind of underhanded, and all the arguments against the first article still remain in place against this article. The money is not free money, the money is not found money, the money was gathered by the town, and yes, it, it may have been extra because the, the state paid more than we expected, but then the town can use the money for things that need doing that possibly couldn't have been funded before. Again, returning this money to the residents does not guarantee spending in town, and I'm sorry, the, the argument that our real estate taxes doubled is false as well. So I urge everyone, just as we did with the last one, to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like to comment on the use of the word "underhanded." I, I would prefer if we just refer to the facts as opposed. I, I understand your passion, but let's, let's just try to keep...
I apologize for the use of the word.
I'm not asking for an apology, I just...
Just, just a brief reminder, we did take care of people this year. When we were at Town Meeting in this room in June, we took $2 million of our stabilization fund to address the crisis at hand. So I just want to remind the folks that we are mindful, and yes, this is the time to assist. But again, we're trying to do it in a, in a multi-year inclusive manner. So I wanted to remind the Town Meeting that we did take $2 million in spring to address the tax levy this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
But through Pilipin, Precinct Five, Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Manager or to the Finance Committee or any relevant people engaged in managing contracts or salaries or other aspects of town's employee salaries. Could you outline for the community what kind of steps or what kind of tools you have available for you to manage salaries and budgets in extraordinary times?
Could you repeat the question?
Do you have, what kind of tools and methods as a manager, as a management person, would you have available at the town level when you have extraordinary fiscal situations in the town that you would employ to manage budget or salaries or expenses?
Well, again, our, our contracts are in place through fiscal year '22, which means not only this year, but then the following year. You would have to reach an agreement with the labor unions to open up those agreements to provide temporary assistance to the community. I'm not aware of any community symbol to Chelmsford that's been successfully able to, to achieve that during, even during this time.
Has there been any examples in the past, recent past, where you have had the ability to open or to stay a particular raise, step raise or something like that, or a given raise pattern, something for a future ability to come back when something, when the conditions improve? Have, has such incidents happened or such cases been done in management?
Yeah, we, we were able to do that back in the Great Recession back in 2008. At that point, the, the contracts were up, and we were able to do years of zero, where there was no change in the pay scale as a result of the, the, you know, great recession that was affecting the communities for, for a multi-year period.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Mr. Moderator, through you to the author of the petition here. The author had claimed in the pre, or, or the presenter had claimed in the previous article that, as way of background, that you were a controller for a very large multinational or other experiences in finance. Could you comment on how multinational companies yield or manage their finance with regard to employee salaries during extraordinary times?
Yes, yes, to be clear, I'm representing Paul Ragazio, I'm not 82 years old. He was the international controller, so I was reading his, his note, but...
I, I apologize. Okay.
No, that's okay. He, he was a highly dedicated CPA and international controller.
Okay, Mr. Latina. I think he felt that he was withdrawing his question because you are not the person who was the controller who could really answer it.
Right. So, Mr. Moderator, you can start the clock, just briefly. The Town Manager has explained, and it's pretty common knowledge, whether it be companies or organizations, in extraordinary times, there are certain steps and tools and methods available, and if all interested parties are, are going to be working together in making sure that there is a sustainable financial gain and operations and maintenance of services, there is going to be something that the Town Manager will initiate or the, the unions will initiate to make sure that some, you know, fiscally responsible practices are followed. It is essential that we see for, for a new resident or someone who's come here recently talked about that they've, they've seen constant crease, and as the presenter has also indicated that the taxes are increasing. I've been a resident since 2005, and I predicted in 2006 or '07, I quickly learned that there's going to be 2.5% continuous, there's never coming down something unless the basic contracts and other things are negotiated down by them. So if you would like...
Please speak into the speaker.
Yep. Please put your equations, math equations, 2.5% year-on-year continues until the year 2050, 2060. Don't worry about it, it's going to continue. There is no change in that pattern. That's, that's going to be my assumption model, basically, where a previous speaker for the previous article did mention, issue by issue, you may be able to gain control or slow down a particular spend or aspect of it, which is not critical at that particular time, maybe change something. An example of it was about two years ago when we had the sewer, the stormwater assessment fee. We made some changes to the funding level for equipment and moved the budgets around, but pretty much it is almost set in this particular case. So I think when we look at the projected values of the required stabilization fund, the required spending levels of what we have to achieve in this town, putting 400,000, 300,000, or a million, and giving it back as free cash, and as the previous speaker did mention here, we cannot guarantee the spend coming back into town. So let's just get on with the business of stabilizing the fund, keeping the rating that our town has, making the big savings on the 10, $15 million bonds that we put out through the Standard and Poor's ratings or other rating agencies, get that savings there and back to the community service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Doesn't look like anyone else. So we have a, you're going to be voting on Article 12 to transfer, I believe the number was 400,000, from free cash to reduce the fiscal 2021 property tax levy.
I think you're seeing a pattern emerge here. The Town Meeting representatives are just not in the mood to remove this money from the stabilization fund as a give back to the citizens, however well-intentioned that might seem. As was pointed out, there's no guarantee that that money would be spent here locally.
The article fails. Twenty in favor, 97 opposed. Article 13.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 13 would transfer the balance in free cash of $1,370,300 to the General Stabilization Fund. Again, back in June, we transferred $2 million from the General Stabilization Fund. The current balance is 9.3 million. The transfer will increase the fund balance to 10.7 million. Again, with $138 million operating budget, this would put us about 7.75% going forward, which is about the midpoint of our 5% to 10% policy. And again, it would enable us to address the significant financial challenges that remain in the years ahead. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation with respect to Article 13?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 13.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation with respect to Article 13?
The Select Board recommends approval by a vote, a vote of four in favor, one absent for approval of Article 13.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? There being none. We will now vote on accepting a transfer of $1,370,300 from free cash to the stabilization All in favor? Yes. Opposed? No.
It's interesting that there was no comment on this particular warrant article, which is obviously going to pass. It might be seen as something of a debate fatigue, having been through all the arguments about whether to put the money in the stabilization fund or to give it back to the townspeople. I think that it's become sort of settled, a settled matter by this point in the, in the debate anyway.
The article passes. 107 in favor, seven opposed, no extension. Article 14. Mr. Latina, are you doing, presenting Article 14?
Moderator, Precinct Four, Brian Latina. If, if I may make a quick statement, and I'd like to withdraw Article 14. May I make a statement as well?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Ragazio, I spoke with him, and he asked that I withdraw both Article 14 and Article 15, which was to remove $1 million in Article 14 from the stabilization fund, which would require 2/3 vote of this Town Meeting, and to remove the, the difference in the free cash that we have just put into the stabilization fund of about $400,000 in Article 15. Mr. Ragazio had advised that the reason for this, these four articles was two, two reasons, really. One was to try to give some relief to our taxpayers, and the second was to withdraw money from the stabilization fund that he felt was overfunded as a rainy day fund during a pandemic.
We, we do realize that, Mr. Latina. You made that very clear. Is there, if, if he has something else to say?
Yep, that is the statement for these two articles, Mr. Moderator. I respectfully withdraw Article 14 and 15.
Thank you. Article 16.
Is Deb out there? Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. So the presentation I have here tonight is really in four parts. The first three parts are in your package. Of those three parts, the first part reiterates the article. I'm not going to read it, you're capable of doing that. The third part that is in your package is a listing of potentially applicable properties. Again, I'm not going to read it, but they are there for your reference. And I'm hoping that we have another slide set that we will be able to show you the actual properties that are in play. Okay, so I'm going to start on Slide 110 in your package and talk about why are we doing this? This is our third attempt to do a historic preservation bylaw. The reason we're trying to, to put this through is to preserve our oldest properties in town. These properties have come under more and more stress lately because the entire region has a very, very high demand for additional housing, and Chelmsford has come, become an in-demand location. We've done a great job with our proximity to highways, our school system, and our investments in maintaining open spaces, among other things, that make this a great community. There's very few vacant lots left in town to build on, and replacement is being seen by the developers as an alternative to fulfill the demand for the housing. This move toward replacement creates a significant stress on our historic residential architecture. The purpose of this article is not to create more buildable lots, but rather it's to provide incentives to owners and developers to preserve the existing historic structures. So the Historical Commission has very limited resources in terms of preventing the destruction of these properties. Public... Public funding of private properties for preservation is not an option, it's simply not permitted. Prohibition of destruction is not an option. We can delay it through the demolition bylaw, but that only limits the prevention of teardown for one year. Preservation restrictions do protect a property. They're basically an easement on the property that passes with ownership of that property. But the owner has to sign up, the present owner has to sign up for them. The, and most owners want some sort of a payback in order to do that, in terms of putting limitations on the future use of their property. So these restrictions do have a lifespan. It's typically 30 years, but that gives us 30 more years to maintain the properties within our community. So why are we trying to give away density? Because it's the only thing we have to buy that preservation restriction. And it is a payment to the owner developer for the right of the town to have that property What is a historic preservation restriction? Well, it's a voluntary legal agreement that protects a significant historic archaeological or cultural resource. It provides an assurance that that property's values will be preserved through subsequent ownerships, remember it passes with the title, by restricting the demolition or alteration of the significant historic features. It's filed at the Registry of Deeds and it runs with the land. It typically focuses on exterior architectural features, but it could address interior spaces if the historic commission deems that it needs to. The heart of the preservation restriction is the grantor's covenants, and these are the pledges for, to maintain the building exterior in good repair and to preserve it in its original or agreed-upon format. Another part of the preservation restriction is the baseline documentation that is done on that property at the time of the restrictions that documents for historic use, all of the existing conditions, the architectural drawings, photographs, historical records and such. And again, it's not in perpetuity, but it's typically for 30 years, and it could be renewed at the end of that 30 years. So under this bylaw, we have five classes of properties. In order to qualify, the property has to meet some requirements. It has to be deemed historically significant by the historical commission or beyond a state or federal preservation. It has to have enough size to qualify for the restrictions. It has to be of a certain age, and we have limited that age to no later than 1,800 in this version. So the five classes. Class one is properties less than 40,000 square feet. They don't benefit from this at all, they're just not big enough to come under these, this program. Properties from 40,000 to 60,000 would benefit by being allowed to be split into two lots. The third class is properties between 60,000 and 80,000. They might be able to qualify for a split that involved a pipe stem lot, in other words, a driveway up the side and then new construction in the back. The properties number four are 80,000 through 120,000. These are very similar to three, but they have a higher likelihood of qualifying for the back lots. And the classification number five is over 120,000 square feet, and they just plain don't need this bylaw, and there's no advantage to them of using it. So there's a couple pages that hopefully you got in color, but if you didn't, you can see them up here. And these show the location of properties that are of this age range and of the different classes of size. And there's not a lot of them. So when we say it may qualify, we talked about it has to be historically significant, it has to be big enough to meet the new size restrictions, without the use of significant wetlands, because you're not going to be able to build on it with wetlands. The existing building has to be located in a location on the lot that allows the separation. So if the existing structure is smackdown in the middle of the lot, there's no way to divide it, because you won't be able to get that half and half. And it has to have conforming frontage and area in order to be able to qualify for the half-size restrictions that are in here. So there's lots of properties in town that meet the age, but don't meet the, aren't big enough to be conforming lots, they're undersized, that fall out of this. And there's lots of them that do meet it that aren't going to have enough frontage to be able to do the splits either. So.
One minute.
Okay. So the question is, isn't this too small? Well, about 33% of our RB lots are this size or smaller, and 70% of our RCs are. This is actually a pretty typical size for a lot in town. And how's it different from the previous one? There's no three-family extensions in this. It limits it to 1,800, where the old one was 1,938. There's a lot fewer properties. We have 15 applicable properties in here as compared to 118 in the last version, and this bylaw does not provide any protection at all for Victorian properties. It strictly addresses our old colonial farmhouses. And the rest of this presentation is, in your package, is the properties where you see the yes in the last column, that's the ones that are pre-qualified as being historically significant.
Thank you.
And I'd like, could Deb say a few words on this as well, from the historical commission's standpoint?
We've already given you the 10 minutes. What would she be adding to the presentation? Okay, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
A majority of the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 16 with a vote of six to one.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of four in favor, one absent for Article 16.
Thank you. Does the Planning Board have a recommendation? You'll have to speak into the microphone. Battery died. Yes, it works.
Upon conducting a duly advertised public hearing on July 8, 2020, continued on July 21st and continued to August 12, 2020, public hearings were closed, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb Tavron, I'm from the Historical Commission. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Okay. The Historical Commission doesn't have a lot of tools when we're trying to save a historic property. We have the one-year demo delay. This would give us another tool to try to work with somebody with a property to try to save it. We can say that our properties are well-maintained, and that's true today, but at any time, somebody may be unable to take care of the property, or it can be purchased, and somebody comes in looking to demolish the historic home and build a new home. This at least gives us a way to work with that person to try to save the old home while letting them have the new home. With the preservation restrictions and covenants built into the bylaw, the Historical Commission will be out once a year to check to make sure that the historic property is well-maintained. We do that once a year, and we will try to enforce those. These properties are part of our history. They're in, a lot of them are around our villages, our old villages. Some of the houses are up, being shown now, and it would be a shame to lose these from our historic parts of town. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is in Gates Precinct 7, and I have questions, not debating at all.
Go ahead.
The first one is, it's been a long time since I was on the Historic District Commission, and in the past, preservation restrictions were in perpetuity, like the one that's on the Old Town Hall. As I understand it, now they're 30 years. Can they be, can they, instead of being extended, can they be in perpetuity? The way they used to be?
Hold on.
Okay, so you want me to ask the other questions?
Can you hear me? There we go. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, through to the previous speaker. Historical preservation restriction, if it's going through the process through the state, is in place in perpetuity. If there is a covenant that's placed upon it, there is a 30-year restriction, a 30-year limitation to that restriction. So it really depends on the type of restriction that's being placed on the property, whether they go through the state process and get the perpetuity, or whether they're only placing a covenant on it.
So can we ask for it to be one that goes through the state? Can this be amended to make it not a 30-year covenant?
Well, certainly, you know, the bylaw could be amended as proposed to include a requirement that it be a in-perpetuity restriction through a historical preservation restriction. However, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that an applicant would be able to obtain that, because it does require a process through the state, and you have to get the state to sign off on that restriction. And you have to have an independent entity that would be holding that restriction.
So is there a downside, though, to doing? I mean, if you don't get that, can you revert to the 30-year covenant?
You can certainly amend the proposed bylaw to include a preference for a historical preservation restriction that's valid in perpetuity. I don't see why you wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a couple of people actually reach out to me, which is amazing, because in the many years that I've been doing this, I've had very few people contact me. So I'm asking this question on their behalf. What they're worried about is a slippery slope, that we pass a zoning, we pass a bylaw like this, and the next thing, we're being asked to do the same thing for other properties that have nothing to do with historic anything. And they're worried about density and more, I mean, all the things you can imagine. But is there some way that the Planning Board can comment on that? Is there a plan to do another article next year, asking us to do this, like, got your...
So you're specifically asking for Representative of the Planning Board to weigh in on that question?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Henry?
Yes.
Do you have a mask, Henry? Oh, he's got one on? I definitely need to get my, definitely need to get my glasses worked on.
Did you see the mask?
Well, you were way in the back. I wasn't even sure it was you. Go ahead.
There is no other plan anywhere. This is very limited to a small amount of properties in town. If Historic comes up with something, we'll always listen, but there is no plan for anything else in the future.
Do you have an objection while you're working on the amendment or someone else speaking? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Colleen Stansfield, Precinct 1, and more? And I did have an amendment I wanted to offer up today. Vivian has it, and I'd love for her to put it up there, just to show what I had planned and what I asked the Planning Board to consider as a friendly amendment. Without glasses, I can't read it.
Okay, can you explain the purpose of your amendment?
Well, this was, this part was because there was nothing that says in this bylaws, I can tell, that this house or historical house needed to be at risk. So my interpretation was to add those in so that it had to be a house that was at risk of being demolished, and then they could take advantage of this bylaw. Then there was another section, too.
Do we have that?
It's the rear lot section. I have it out, and I hope everybody has it.
Yes, I'm just wondering if it's on the screen.
It's fine, because that one I just wanted out completely. I absolutely do not agree with rear lots that are under 80,000 square feet, because it's a house behind a house, and the rear lots, as they stand today, have a 40-foot step back on each side. So with a 40, a half-size lot at 40,000, you're not going to get much of a house there. It's not really going to benefit anything. And the previous screen, that's that one. The previous screen had the RC district taken out completely to be, be able to use this bylaw, because that is a 20,000-square-foot lot already, and it's allowed for two families. So you're going to create a 10,000-square-foot lot, and a two-family goes on it. So I don't think that one, it isn't in the bylaw now, and it shouldn't be in the bylaw now.
So you asked the Planning Board if they would accept this as a friendly amendment?
Yes, and they weren't inclined to do such.
Okay.
So my next effort was to go around town and make sure that I'm on the right track, because there's a lot of neighborhoods that have had to deal with these lots being presented, half-size, undersized, not enough frontage, variance-type material.
Okay, I don't want to cut you off, but I guess my question is, are you presenting this as an amendment to the bylaw?
I'm getting there.
Well, I think it's a yes or no question, and then you can argue the merits of your amendment, and then we would vote on the amendment.
So right now, I went around to get support, and I asked people that had been affected by this, and in my doing so, I found nobody that supported any piece of this. So right now, I am not going to submit my amendment. What I am going to do is ask that everybody vote this down, because the general pulse of this town does not agree with half-size lots, half-size rear lots, and cutting lots around a historical house that will ruin some of our villages.
Okay, so you're not presenting it as an amendment?
No, but I wanted everybody to see what was there. And then just in my research, I had people that...
So really, you're, I...
I'm talking against the main motion.
Okay, and I think you really used up your three minutes in the way that you approached it. I thought you were asking questions, but...
Wow.
Okay?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name...
among other things, quote, 'mindful of our historical past'?"
So, excuse me. So are you actually asking a rhetorical question, or are you going to, are you arguing your position? I just want to know...
I am using a rhetorical question to argue my position.
So now you're on a three-minute time limit?
If this passes, it could significantly impact the look of the town's main roads, as they are the original roads and the location of our earliest residents. The remains, the physical remains of our earliest residents. The body has voted this down three times previously, and I am asking you to please do so again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, John Skinner. I actually was unaware that this has been brought before town meeting on three previous occasions. Not a fan of having things continuously brought forward again and again and again. To me, if it's voted down, it's voted down, how many times are you going to revisit it until you get a yes? My concern here is a little bit different. I've seen the articles that are written about our sewer capacity, you know, we're reaching sewer capacity, and incentivizing a developer to buy a piece of property, because now he can build a second property behind that, is just going to add more strain and stress on our sewer situation in town. I don't think we need to do that, and I think that that's something that you folks really need to consider. We've built so many properties in this town in the recent years, that we're running out of the ability to get rid of our waste. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Strip. I live at Ninety High Street, and I'm the vice chair of the Historic Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening in support of Article 16. One of the reasons I wanted to join the Historic Commission was to help make sure we, as a town, didn't lose sight of our history. There is a natural want to move forward, and to modernize and improve our way of life, but there needs to be a balance. We need to have a physical connection to our past, and this revised version of the preservation bylaw addresses our oldest and most vulnerable group of homes. If the town of Chelmsford's designation is number fourteen out of One Magazine's top fifty places to live, the stress on growth and housing will be ever greater. We need to save and protect these homes, and I am confident the town sees the value in doing so. I urge you to vote yes on Article 16. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Polton, Precinct 8, through the moderator to the presenter. I'm looking at a new bylaw, having seen many bylaws in the past, so just a few clarifications, please. First, the way I read this, is it true that, should we pass this, nothing happens without Planning Board approval? Is that correct?
That's correct, and Historical Commission.
So should we pass this, nothing changes except someone's ability to go before the Planning Board and make a presentation? And that would lead to a public hearing and Planning Board approval? So this isn't granting anybody anything, or is it?
No, this is required to get a special permit. So this is not just a plan approval, but it is a consideration of the merits of the proposal, as well as a compliance with the requirements.
And during that process, will abutters and anybody else have the opportunity to weigh in?
Absolutely. It's a public meeting.
I also noticed that you're being, I think, very conservative. Eighteen hundred is the cutoff, so the building has to be built before eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred is the cutoff. It is our oldest and most vulnerable buildings. There's only about fifteen of them that are currently qualified to even be presented, and not all of them would be able to qualify based on the layout of their property. There are perhaps two or three that could be considered for a rear lot of those.
I see a couple of numbers. What's the actual number of properties that would be affected if we pass this?
Fifteen.
I'm sorry, say again?
Fifteen would be able to be considered. I can't say that all of those would be able to get approved.
And right now, is it correct, and I'm not sure reading this, even if something is an historic building, even if it's on the register, et cetera, et cetera, it can still be demolished?
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we have one that's on this list that has already passed through its demolition delay and could be demolished any day. We, it's private property. We can't stop the owner from taking it down. We can delay it, but that's all.
And my last question is, could you explain host property, and how that impacts anything else that gets voted?
Host property?
Or host lot?
Oh, host lot, all right. So we added some new definitions in here. There's, I guess, four of them. So parent parcel is the existing parcel that contains the historic property. You saw them up here when we went through the slides on the properties. The host lot would be the smaller lot that was formed to hold the historic structure. And it's permitted under this bylaw to be on a smaller lot than is typically permitted within that zone. The bonus lot is a second lot that's created out of that parent parcel, and it also is permitted to be a smaller lot and hold a new house. And this is the bonus payment for putting the original property under historic preservation restrictions. And then a conforming lot is a lot that meets all of today's standards. So it, for instance, it's in here, because if you had a very large lot, you could still use this and split off multiple conforming lots that you'd be able to do today anyway. So like, if you had a twenty-acre lot with a historic parcel, you could still split off your conforming lots, as you could today, under today's bylaw, but it still gives you the ability to have that host and bonus lot to get the payback for placing the original historic property under preservation restrictions.
And could you explain that, please? As we're, I'm a little confused.
All right.
Are these properties that are facing demolition?
One of them is currently facing demolition. The other ones are at risk simply because of their age, the fact that they are very difficult to maintain, they're expensive to maintain, and property values are so bloody high in Chelmsford. So they're at risk. And this is what we're trying to deal with with this bylaw, is create something to deal with that risk of loss.
Okay, I'll return to the microphone with my arguments, rather than taking any more time right now, but thank you for your answers. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Tavarna from the Historical Commission. I would just like to point out a couple things. Today, we have fewer than one hundred houses that were built prior to eighteen hundred standing, and I think there's something like nineteen thousand houses in Chelmsford. Is that approximately correct? So we're asking for a very small help here. Once these houses are gone, they're gone, and they're almost gone now, and that's why we feel it's so important to try to save those that we can. We can't save all of them still, but we can at least try. And these are our oldest, they're our most vulnerable, and they are our history. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have a question for the presenter.
Kindly identify yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, Chris Bowman, Precinct 4, through Julio Street. And I was wondering, of all the possible affected properties that you have listed, were any of these, any of the abutters to these properties notified out to three hundred feet of this proposed bylaw? Because their properties would be affected if this bylaw went through. Were they notified?
I believe so. I think Evan can answer that.
The abutting properties were not notified. As this bylaw is proposed, is not project, is not property-specific. It's not akin to like an overlay bylaw, where individual properties are part of the bylaw.
Okay, excuse me, but there are a number of different properties listed, so those properties are identified.
Yeah, Ms. Bowman, Town Council has indicated to me that notification where it is a general bylaw would not apply, and that notice would only come into effect if there was a special permit for a particular property.
Even with specific properties?
All they were providing were examples...
No, I'm just asking for clarification.
No, no, and I'm explaining to you.
Okay.
So let's go on to something else.
Okay, I would just like to say, I disagree with that, because people should have a right to know if this proposed bylaw, or one like it, goes through, that could significantly affect their properties and the quality of life. That said, would you start the clock, please?
Excuse me?
No, no.
Okay.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As the presenter stated earlier, this is the third time that, a third version of this bylaw has been presented to town meeting. The two prior town meetings, this bylaw was voted down because it was seen as, and is, a developer's bylaw. Nothing has changed. This bylaw is still a developer's bylaw.
Absolutely.
Mercilessly allows properties to be chopped up. There's a limitation on historical preservation, which means it's not preservation at all. It's an extremely small window when compared to the future. In addition to that, the town already has a historic preservation bylaw, based upon the federal and state preservation criteria. And that is Chapter 16, and Chapter 68, I believe, is a bylaw that addresses historic districts. So the town already has ample ability to determine which properties are historically significant, and which ones meet the federal and state criteria, and then go for permanent historic preservation. Thirty years versus the future is extremely small, and is not historic preservation whatsoever. So I encourage you all to vote this down. This particular bylaw, again, would just benefit developers, would chop up parcels, and would destroy the neighborhoods, and will already have methods in order to have historic preservation that meet the appropriate criteria. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Anita Tanini, Precinct 4. You can start the clock. While I appreciate the desire to keep these properties, I've lived in Chelmsford fifty years. I love the historical homes. I understand the desire to keep them. However, what I think this bylaw is doing is the exact opposite. This is incentivizing developers to buy a house, to outbid someone who may want a single-family home...
Can you speak up louder, or into the microphone? I'm not sure everyone can hear.
Someone who may want a single-family home with the land. Now, if you pass this bylaw, these properties become more expensive, developers will build them, yes, they may preserve, may do some of the niceties to keep the outside looking nice, but they're in there to make a buck, and I think this is doing a disservice. Furthermore, I think we have the setbacks in our bylaws for a reason, and you have, there is a path already. If someone wants to do this, they can just go through the normal zoning board of appeals, which notifies the abutters, they can work together to make it something that would be pleasant for the whole neighborhood, and not deteriorate or take away value from those who already have bought into the neighborhood. So I urge everyone to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Chelmsford. I just wanted to...
No, you have to identify your name.
My name is David Hutchinson.
Thank you.
I live at forty-two Bartlett Street. I'm a disabled veteran and longtime resident of Chelmsford, and I'm an abutter of one of the properties that was just mentioned in that list, specifically Forty-seven Boston Road. I'm opposed to this bylaw, because again, I believe that it is unnecessary, because this specific issue was dealt with last year by the zoning board of appeals for the house at Forty-seven Boston Road, which sounds exactly like this bylaw. And this was shot down in an open, and honest, and straightforward process, where all the abutters and all the concerned parties had a role to play, and it was voted down. And it seems now that this is some kind of roundabout way to go around zoning. I was not aware that this has come up multiple times, but I am quite disappointed to hear about this, that an unnecessary developers' bill has found its way this way. I spoke to a lot of my neighbors, but as we weren't informed about this, as we weren't required to be informed, I couldn't mobilize very many people. I would also like to read a quick letter from another neighbor, if that's okay.
You have a minute and fifty-two seconds to do it.
I have plenty of time, I'm quite sure. This is addressed to the town meeting representatives and attendees. Article sixteen in tonight's meeting allows the Planning Board to autonomously issue grants, and we object to any new processes that not open to public input. For example, the new rule seemed to be written for one particular party after a fair process, listened to concerned parties, and voted unanimously against zoning variance. This new amendment seeks to bypass. Do we need another path by which developers may bypass the zoning laws that were written to protect them? We agree to the need for preservation, we do not agree with the intent to circumvent proper channels in order to add more unwanted development in the town. Sincerely, David Vanderwald and Valerie Kelly, Eighty Bartlett Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Tony Coyte, and I'm from Precinct 4. I jotted down a few comments, and I guess, boy, I guess you've already started it. Very good. This warrant certainly has a noble cause, but in my opinion, the warrant basically states that rehabbing a historical building that was built before eighteen hundred is reason enough to allow non-conforming lots to become buildable lots. One of my fears is that, if taxed, why couldn't someone who has an historically designated home, built after eighteen hundred, use the same argument for allowing non-conforming I have plenty of time, I'm quite sure. This is addressed to the town meeting representatives and attendees. Article 16 in tonight's meeting allows the planning board to autonomously issue grants, and we object to any new processes that not open to public input. For example, the new rule seemed to be written for one particular party after a fair process, listened to concerned parties, and voted unanimously against zoning variance. This new amendment seeks to bypass. Do we need another path by which developers may bypass the zoning laws that were written to protect them? We agree to the need for preservation. We do not agree with the intent to circumvent proper channels in order to add more unwanted development in the town. Sincerely, David, sincerely, David Vanderwald and Valerie Kelly, 80 Bartlett Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Tony Coyte, and I'm from Precinct 4. I jotted down a few comments, and I guess, boy, I guess you've already started it. Very good. This warrant certainly has a noble cause, but in my opinion, the warrant basically states that rehabbing a historical building that was built before 1800 is reason enough to allow non-conforming lots to become buildable lots. One of my fears is that, if taxed, why couldn't someone who has an historically designated home, built after 1800, use the same argument for allowing non-conforming lots? This warrant may set a precedent. I think this puts the variance board at a disadvantage in ruling on additional variance requests. Someone may present the argument that, you know, the year 1800 is obtrusive. Another thing I have, that I'm of the opinion, as other people have stated, that the current variance board process provides a vehicle for determining variances of non-conforming lots. It allows each request to stand on its own merits. I'm concerned that it doesn't give the, well, I didn't think it gave the abutters the, the--
Coyte.
--the ability to, to comment on whether they would have single or multiple family dwellings. Now, the warrant states that its purpose is not to increase buildable lots, and I'm sure that was not the intent of this, but I fear that it does just that. As presented, I have just too many questions for me to support this warrant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so, rules, Precinct 3, move the question.
There's been a motion to move the question. So, we will vote, a vote in, the affirmative is to move the question, so we will have no further debate or questions on the matter. The article, the motion passes, 86 in favor, 22 opposed. So, now we will address the motion itself, the, the article. This requires a two-thirds approval. All in favor of the Article 16? Vote yes. Opposed, we'll vote no. The article fails. Nineteen in favor, 86 opposed, two abstentions. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, Article 17 is a warrant article sponsored by the Select Board regarding wildlife feeding. Welcome to the podium, Select Board Chair Ken LaFave.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. And I start off by thanking my fellow board members for supporting me in this process. This started back probably in the month of November last year, when I had received some correspondence from Ed Baroda, who lives here in Chelmsford on 31 Long Mill Road. Ed has sent me an email tonight and asked me to read it to everybody. Dear Chelmsford Town Representatives, I'm writing to ask for your support and your vote in favor of Article 17 in tonight's town meeting. In essence, the purpose of this article is to discourage active intentional humans providing sources of food to the wild animals. Although my involvement was primarily focused on work avoiding feeding wild turkeys in our neighborhood, the article also includes other animals such as bears, coyotes, deers, et cetera. Wild turkeys in large numbers have become too accustomed to the environment, creating safe and healthy concerns. Early on, I was able to provide a copy of the ordinance currently in place in the town of Westford. The language was amended to better reflect the needs for the town of Chelmsford. Much work has been done in creating this draft, including multiple vetting by various committees. My thanks goes out to all those who were involved and who have supported this article. It is encouraged to see, it is encouraging to see it reach this milestone. Passage of Article 17 for the town of Chelmsford would be an important step in the right direction, and your support is greatly appreciated. On behalf of me and many concerned neighbors who joined me, thank you for your vote. Sincerely, Ed Baroda. I'll go through the article quickly in a second, but just to give a little background, Ed has neighbors who for five years now have been feeding us what started out as a small flock of turkeys, and now has grown to a large number as, when the babies came this spring, 50. The neighbors are complaining of these birds are dropping on their porches, their steps, their sidewalks, driveways, cars, and on their roofs. Not only that, the flock has become very aggressive towards people when they're out walking and on, on their walks in the streets, kids out in the yards playing, and it's become quite an issue. And this primarily focuses on a few of his neighbors who put food out regularly on a daily basis to feed this flock. Since this has come up, I've heard from several residents of Chelmsford. I had one person call me and tell me that they had a neighbor putting food out at night for what started out as two skunks and is now as five. Someone over off of Mill Road called me to let me know that there's a flock of turkey bee, turkeys being fed there, and that's starting to grow. So, clearly, it's been an issue. So, to get into the article itself, basically, the article wanted to restrict feeding of undomesticated and unrestrained animal or fowl, including but not limited to bears, coyotes, deers, foxes, raccoons, skunks, turkeys, and other animals, or fowl causing public safety threats and nuances, uh, and news, nuances, uh, nuisances, sorry. And specifically, it addresses ground feeding, placing or exposing, depositing, distributing, or scattering directly or indirectly any grain, shelled, shucked, or unshucked corn, seeds, wheat, bread or bakery products, salt, meats or parts of, or parts, fish or parts, honey, molasses, or any other feed or nutritive substance in the manner or form as to constitute for such wildlife to lure, attract, or entice to, on, or over any such areas where such feed items have been placed, exposed, deposited, distributed, or scattered. Most importantly is this puts the enforcement of this bylaw to the animal control officer, also to the police and agents of the Board of Health and state environmental police officers. While we were going through the process, we did hear back from the animal control officer. As it stands now, he has no enforcement, when there is an issue, to order someone to stop feeding the wild animals. This is not intended to stop anybody that has domesticated birds or fowl, or any other animals that they're raising, so if you're a farmer or if you have pets outside. It is also not intended to prohibit bird, to prohibit bird feeders, squirrel feeders, or bat houses. However, if the feeder, feeder is determined that it is part of the safety hazard, the threat, or the nuisance, then the Chelmsford Animal Control Officer would have that jurisdiction to order that food removed for 40, in 48 hours, until the threat is gone. That's pretty much the article oversimplified. I don't know if anybody has any questions, want me to go into it in more detail. There are fines. You know, the first offense is written warning, the second offense is a $25 fine, the third offense is 50, and each subsequent offense is $100.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 17.
Does the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board voted four in favor and one absence of the warrant article.
Thank you.
Oh, what was it? Oh, three and one. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I assume that Mr. Wagner, you have some comments.
Will Wagner, Precinct 8. Just a quick question on the, the feeding. So, I understand the language, purposeful distribution, such and such. What about something, and the use of bird feeders or the removal of them pending, say, the bear deciding to use your yard as a snack bar? What about things like spreading grass seed, which I noticed on Crooked Spring has attracted the turkeys every night for three months while this, until the seed had finally sprouted? How would that fall under this bylaw amendment?
Well, first of all, I think you'd need someone to complain that you were doing it on a consistent basis to attract, intentionally attract those animals. I mean, that's the purpose of it. Someone who's going out on a daily basis and luring or attracting those animals, you know, in an essence, to see them and to help them survive.
So, so the unintentional attraction because you happen to be seeding for grass or something along those lines would not fall under the fine?
The only way I could see that qualifying is if somebody was unintentionally seeding on a consistent basis, that it became a problem, that it could be identified, that, that unintentional consistent pattern was attracting, say, a bear every night. I think that would probably get expensive, seeing what it's done to the bird feeders in my neighborhood. But, but that's, you know, obviously, is the goal, is someone has to call, say, listen, this neighbor of mine is consistently, you know, feeding these animals to attract them over here, and it's now posed a threat.
Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify because, as I said, the Crooked Spring, for example, the flock of turkeys there has been in someone's yard every night for three months because they seeded and the birds have been having a feast. So, that would not fall under this as, as a violation. Is that correct?
Well, i- if you were to call and say, listen, that person's throwing off seed every night with the intent of not really growing a lawn, but to feed the animals--
So, okay.
And, and it's really not meant to restrict anybody from doing something like that. It's more, it's giving a tool to the animal control officer to enforce--
Yeah, I was just concerned that it might be unintentionally applied to someone who was merely trying to improve their lawn, but happened to attract the birds in the case.
Right. As it stands now, we asked the animal control officer, I think that he said there's been about three occasions a year where someone calls with a complaint, and he has no way to enforce it.
Thank you.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct 1. I've got a bunch of questions about this. Is the intent of this to reduce the number of wild animals in our areas, in our residential areas?
I don't think that the intent is to reduce the natural occurrence of the wild animals in our area.
So, has this been discussed and coordinated with the Conservation Commission?
Well, we advertised it and asked all the boards if they had any questions to come to us, to our meetings. We had, I don't know, I think it was three or four different hearings on it. The Board of Health did show up, and the animal control officer showed up. So, we did have people attend it. We had it, we, and we took the warrant article from another town who had had it vetted, and then we gave it to our own legal who had it vetted. So, I think, you know, the pro, and we started this in November, and it's now almost a year later. So, if someone hadn't come forward over the course of a year in five, four or five meetings, I'd be surprised, but I don't, I don't, I mean, I can't guess what Conservation would say, but no, they weren't, they did not show up at any of the meetings.
Okay. Has there been given any consideration to how much of the, the wild animal food is being provided by people feeding the animals versus naturally occurring food stops in our yards?
Well, I think in, in the cases that were brought to the attention of myself and to the animal control officer, I think it was three or four cases over the last year where it was intentionally, people were filmed in their yard putting out large amounts of food on their lawns. And there is no tool for the animal control officer to say, stop that.
How much labor do we expect is going to be required from the animal control officer to respond to this?
Probably, yeah, probably no additional because he's getting the calls and going out as it is. And actually, probably less labor because if he can tell someone to stop and give them a fine, they're probably not going to do it again, whereas it is now, he has to go out several times. We have one house, I, I think it's off of Mill Road, where he's been out probably over half a dozen times, trying to get the neighbors to agree to something, and hasn't been able to, you know, get a change of habits.
So, do I understand you that this is regulation that is intended to address a couple bad behavior instances?
This is regulation that is intended to give the animal control officer a way to change people's behavior if it's causing threats in the community. I gotta go.
I don't know. Under this bylaw, does this make it illegal to compost in your yard?
No. But I will say this, if you're composting and it is consistently attracting an animal to the neighborhood that then poses a threat to a neighbor and they call, the animal control officer would be able to say to you, that composting either has to be secured or removed.
So, this encourages neighbors to complain about each other?
I'd be surprised if the neighbors even know this bylaw gets passed.
Okay. Does this make it illegal to provide food to wild animals in your yard from the plants that you--
No.
--plant there?
No.
You know, apple trees and berries and nuts and such?
No.
What says that that's exempted?
If you read the bylaw, it says in there that it has to be identified as something like trash, storing of food for other animals that maybe they can get into. They go through the list. I did not see anywhere in there that says, if you have apple trees, you've got to cut them down.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that exempted it either. Yeah, you can start the clock. And I'll be brief. It's a really good idea not to feed wild animals. It's bad for the animals and it's dangerous for the people. But legislating something that is really an education issue just always strikes me as a bad thing to do. And legislating something that depends on one neighbor complaining about another in today's world is a really bad thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Bowman, Precinct 4 through Julio Street. If you would start the clock, please. Thank you. I would just like to remind everyone that the past 10 years or so, there has been an increase of wildlife in the residential neighborhoods. But this has dramatically increased over the last three to five years. That increase is due to the destruction of wildlife habitat. And that's due to overdevelopment. And we know that because our sewer capacity is, has now reached its limit. So, what happens with the destruction of wildlife habitat is wildlife are now making the residential neighborhoods part of their habitat. And this is especially true in Precinct 4. So, there are going to be continued and increasing presence of all types of wildlife because of this overdevelopment and the continued overdevelopment. So, it should be no surprise to see a lot of wildlife in and amongst the residential neighborhoods throughout town. So, they are not a nuisance when they have to adapt and find new habitat, and the only places that are available are residential neighborhoods. So, therefore, I would request everybody to vote this down and let the wildlife be, and the town to stop overdeveloping so we can retain the character of the town--
Okay, look, development is not an issue. The issue is whether or not you should feed animals to attract them to your neighborhood.
I understand that, but that goes--
Well, that's not what you're arguing, so please, stick to the argument.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, that is not what I'm arguing.
You just said overdevelopment.
I'm arguing about habitat, which has to do with wildlife seeking food-- I'm arguing about habitat, which has to do with wildlife seeking food sources. They don't have their habitat as they used to, and there was a distinction between wildlife habitat and residential neighborhoods. Now there is not, there is a crossover. That's all I wanted to state and let people be aware of this, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elaine McDonald, Precinct One. And you can start the clock because I'm gonna tell a story. When I moved here with my husband and my son, who was six, we're very excited for our backyard because it was bounded by three sides by woods. So you had relatively like natural fence. This is 20 years ago. This guy who's, my guy who's six is now 26. This is before a lot of the development that people are upset about. The Dingleberry next door neighbor, who thank God does not live there anymore, was hand-feeding skunks. And the skunk mom was like going, hey, babies, let's go to the house, all these houses on the street. And I had to keep my son, who before we were living in an apartment, he didn't have a yard, I had to keep him in for a year. Thank God, Dingleberry moved. And we had to wait a season and a half till the skunks turned themselves over and were back, going back to normal skunk behavior. They were coming out in the daylight. Regular skunks are semi nocturnal, so if you want your kid not to hit, hit a father or a skunk, you pull them in. So I'm actually very much in favor of it. I'm not sure if it's structured perfectly. But yes, my neck, my backdoor, my backyard now, without any feeders, without anything, is a freaking dizzy movie. You don't need to feed any animals to see them. You just need to be quiet. And there are some people who take it too seriously, who want, who teach animals not to fear us, and that's not natural. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Polton, Precinct Eight. A question through the moderator to the presenter. In, in reading this, which seems like a good idea, I'm just wondering about folks that have bird baths and bird feeders, not to necessarily attract nuisance animals, but to enjoy the birds that are already with us. Are they going to be prohibited, no more bird feeders or bird baths? Or is there a provision for that?
No, but specifically, uh, section F. The section is, so it, under wildlife feeding exceptions, shall not be interpreted to include, shall not be interpreted to prohibit bird feeders, squirrel feeders, or bat houses. However, if the feeder itself gets identified as a nuisance or a threat, it could be asked to be removed.
So this isn't aimed at those passive enjoyment of the birds?
Not at all.
All right, thank you very much, that helps.
Thank you.
Janet Dubner, Precinct Six. And I'm coming up here to respond to a resident who told me that because animals are being fed near her home, she has had 20 deer coming through her yard on a regular basis. That seems pretty excessive. And I don't know how many other people have had that problem. We haven't had a lot of people coming up to talk about it. But wild animals aren't supposed to be too friendly with humans, and we're not supposed to be too friendly with them. So I would, I would ask people to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make this quick question. So we already have regulations on the book about nuisance, correct? Masking, right? Like there's someone, there's an issue, they will call up the town.
Do we have regulations on the book about nuisance animals?
About?
Um, nuisance animals, as far as I'm concerned, the animal control, usually barking dogs, nuisance dogs, things like that, but not wildlife.
So you, you currently get a call regarding excessive feeding and you cannot do anything?
I don't have any power to do anything for excessive feeding of wildlife. Mass state, mass wildlife itself states in their website, and when I talk to them, that they encourage people not to feed wildlife because it creates a dependency. It takes an animal who's used to foraging for food, and now they're starting to eat from people's hand, from the, you know, bird feeders, things like that. They forget how to teach the smaller animals the same thing, how to forage. So now you're creating a dependency. All of a sudden, let's say you move. Now you've been feeding deer for years. You move, the new residents don't want to feed the deer. What are they gonna do? They have to learn to forage again. Some may starve, some, you know, I mean, we're trying to limit the amount of motor vehicle while the animal collisions also.
So you can start the clock. I'm voting in favor of this, this seems reasonable. I trust the animal control officer to know when it's a problem and when it's just someone seeding their grass or has a normal bird feeder out there or, or whatever. Like, I trust that you can make that decision, and if it's a nuisance, at least you have a mechanism to help alleviate that issue.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no one else, so we're going to vote on Article 17, Wildlife Feeding. All in favor of the article, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And while we're voting, we have two final articles and.
I'm gonna make a motion to suspend the rules so we can take the last two articles tonight.
Thank you. And we'll get to that as soon as we vote on this one.
One of the favor, gave a very cogent argument and obviously was persuasive to a lot of the town meeting representatives and you see that reflected.
The article passes 84 in favor, 22 opposed, no abstentions. And tonight's parliamentarian, Mr. Zaharulis, has kindly proposed a motion to suspend the rules so that we can finish the last two articles tonight. Uh, can we, can we arrange for a vote on that or, uh? Nope. How about a show of hands? All in favor suspending the rules so we can get rid of the last two Warren articles? All opposed? Okay, uh, thank you. So we will now go to Article 18.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 18 is a request to transfer from the Sewer System Capital Improvement Fund $150,000 to do a sewer capacity study. The town has an intimsible agreement with the City of Lowell to convey 3.01 million gallons per day to the Lowell Regional Waste Water Facility. Of that, the town a couple decades ago allocated 350,000, 350 million gallons, thousand gallons per day to the town of Tingsborough, which leaves us with a capacity of 2.66 million gallons per day. I provided you with data that shows the sewer flow from 2010 and over the last five years. And basically, the concern that we need to do the study at this time is, and we've imposed a moratorium, is the large residential developments have put us in a situation of concern in terms of the need to study and determine the path for the expansion of the town sewer system. The, we, we know of potential projects at UMass West Campus, Mercury Computer, adjacent to UPS off of Brick Hill Road. The problem was recognized almost 20 years ago. The Sewer Commission at that time became concerned that there was insufficient sewer capacity in the community. They went to the town meeting and brought a town, home rule petition to the state legislature to enact a, a moratorium and, and to also establish a revenue fund to provide for the eventual expansion of the sewer capacity of the community. That fee was established in 2004. There's currently 2.3 million dollars in that fund. And, and what we, we've obtained is scope of services from the town's sewer consultant. Basically, what we wanted to do was gather and analyze data regarding the wastewater flow at the regional wastewater treatment plant and look if there's any potential consequences or penalties to exceed the permitted flow. Because this problem isn't limited to the town of Chelmsford. The wastewater facility in Lowell serves Chelmsford, Tewksbury, Drakeett, Tingsborough, and the City of Lowell. And at this point, it appears that the town of Chelmsford, in addition to the town of Drakeett and the City of Lowell, have capacity needs. And so what we want to do is, is get some data, meet with those officials from the other towns, and figure out what the options are in terms of what penalties, because we believe that there is some capacity at the plant, however limited, that may not satisfy all the needs of all the communities. We then would look inside the town to see what can we do to conserve our wastewater flow and, and other measures inside the town, including the ability, can, can we even, for example, go look to the Barica Plant as a, as a solution? Or construct a, a mini wastewater treatment facility at Southwell off of Wotton Street? And then obviously, consultants would come back with a final report. And the report itself would talk about $90,000. If Southwell were seen to be a reasonable solution, then there would be an additional 60 to make it the total of 150, which is the request, to do some field investigations. Obviously, things are different, and if you've watched some of the recent news in the town of Littleton, for example, their wastewater treatment facility that they're installing on a partial portion of their town actually returns the sewer flow water into the groundwater table so as not to diminish the water table. So again, at this point in time, the expected limitation of the town sewer system is nearing. We want to do the study, find out what the options are, and work with our neighboring communities and look within ourselves to see what can be done into the future. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
A majority of the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 18 with a vote of four in favor, two against, and one abstention.
And does the Board, the Select Board have a recommended?
The Select Board recommended, or voted in favor of the sewer capacity study, Article 18, four in favor, zero against, and one absent.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this Warren article?
David Foley, Precinct Five. Could you go back to slide 135, please?
135.
Yes, right here, that's it, thank you. On this table of sewer flow, does that include any correction for vacancies in the town?
No, this is the flow that goes through the plant in Lowell as meters. So it, and so there's no, it doesn't account for any external factors. This is what we pay to dispose and treat at the Lowell plant. So it doesn't, doesn't have any adjustment factors.
So, so if vacant buildings were to become reoccupied, it stands to reason that those numbers would increase somewhat?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I noticed in 2018 that the Chelmsford flow was 2.68, which is 20,000 gallons per day over our capacity or allotment. Now, my question is, at that time, did that set off any sort of a red flag?
Yes, it did. And, and that's why a year ago, again, this is calendar year 18, which is fiscal year 19. Okay, so a year ago, I notified the Select Board, just about a year ago, it was actually October 31st, 2019, which is fiscal year 19, that we were, we were nearing the, the end of our sewer capacity and that we needed to move forward to explore options. And this came out of the, the planning for the master plan update. The data was provided to me from the sewer, from the sewer division of the town through the Assistant DPW Director Steve Yonley, that, that, that we were issuing, we were issuing near, near capacity.
No, thank you. From this table, I can see that in 2010, 10 years ago, that the, uh, usage was 2.5 million gallons per day. And it's my understanding that at that time, that Weston and Sampson calculated that if all the town did was tie in the remaining planned residential properties to the sewer system, that that would more than consume the entire remaining balance of our allotment. And at that time, Weston and Sampson prepared a study for the town recommending certain steps to take, such as water conservation, infrastructure maintenance, inflow reduction. And so my, my question is, in response to that study and the Weston and Sampson recommendations, what water conservation measures have we made in order to conserve water over this last decade?
I, I think it goes beyond that. As I said, back in 2002, the Sewer Commission came to the same conclusion, that they were, that we would not meet our capacity needs and therefore establish this fund that now has 2.3 million dollars. But I'm not aware of any efforts over the last decade to, to address Sewer Commission. So I can't identify any for you.
Okay, thank you. And the, the current fund balance of 2.3 million, have we previously taken money out of that in order to address this issue? Since this issue has been known for 20, almost 20 years now?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, my recommendation is that this study, I think, is a good idea.
Thank you.
But because these recommendations have already been made, even as much as 10 years ago, I'm wondering why we don't, aren't already spending this money in order to address issues of water conservation, inflow reduction? And I'm hoping that we already have an infrastructure maintenance program since they already recommended that to us 10 years ago. For example, one of their recommendations was a voluntary rebate program on fixtures.
So you're arguing now?
Yes, I guess that's fair to say, thank you. Um, so these monies don't seem like a tremendous amount, but considering that there's already 2.3 million in this fund, and they've expressed purpose is to address this issue, I'm surprised that we aren't already implementing some programs that in order to, you know, possibly stave off, or in this case, actually to reduce our water consumption. It's really more about doing that. That's all, really all I, I had to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Buckley, Precinct Six. I got a question, Paul. How much revenue was lost from the commercial and water sewer rates during the shutdown? The town, did they lose a substantial amount of money?
No. I, I mean, the, we, we pay for a metered water, you know, metered water is, is our sewer reading. We don't have sewer meters, it comes from the water. We, we've, we finished the year in the black. The town accountant just closed the books for fiscal year 20. We didn't, we didn't lose any money, we, we finished the year in the black.
Well, we're in the danger zone right now, correct?
Well, i- i- it's interesting because it's not just flow in terms of development. For example, this is calendar year data. If, if, I, I obtained from the sewer superintendent the fiscal year data because this data ends on December 31st, 2019. And there were a lot of questions about, well, gee, what happened during the pandemic? And now everybody's working from home and places are shut down and so forth. And what I learned is that the fiscal year 20, which means just three months ago, the, the flow for that year was 2.418 million gallons for the fiscal year. Going back to fiscal year 2010, it was 2.446 million. So it actually, we use less sewer flow this past fiscal year than we did 10 years ago. And the reason for that is, obviously, we have more housing and more development than we did 10 years ago. It's because there are other variables that contribute, such as precipitation. And, and, and what we see is when we gather the data from the other towns, it ebbs and flows together based upon weather conditions in, in the, you know, it's not just about development. And so again, we rang the bell a year ago, and we come to town meeting tonight saying, look, we can see what's happening. The new type of housing stock looks for. The new type of housing stock looks for multifamily development, and that's not sustainable without accelerating our efforts into a study. And the moratorium that's in place right now is not affecting the typical residential homeowner or reoccupancy of existing buildings. What is, what is doing right now is we're avoiding large-scale unforeseen development, much like they did in 2002, when they put the moratorium on at that time.
Okay, but we mentioned Drake. We know Lowell's built out. The Duck Island plant's quite old. So I was just curious, you know, the other towns besides Drake and Lowell, are they?
And Tingsborough. Tingsborough has a flow need as well. So it's, so, again, it's Lowell, Tingsborough, Drake, and Chelmsford. The only one who's not expressing a need at this point is Tewksbury.
You can start the clock. Like I say, excuse me, but, you know, did we all just get out of our town meeting time machine? This sounds an awful lot like the fall 1980 town meeting, with all this talk of wastewater treatment plants and new homes going back on septic systems. We need reforms to our zoning bylaws regarding sewer accessibility and sewer capacity at the Duck Island plant. And you're going to ask yourself, how did we get here so fast? The town has a zeal for building 300-unit condos, apartments. And it affects the ratepayers, and never seeing a construction project they don't like, all in the name of 40B. This comes with a cost to the ratepayers, higher sewer, higher water rates. The homeowners will take it in the neck. Once again, a hard moratorium is what is needed. I agree with the Board of Health, and I'll tell you, you know we're on the right track when the Planning Board meetings go from three and a half hours to an hour, an hour and a half. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Audrey Luttrell, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, it's for you to the speaker. So I wanted to understand the sewer capacity fee. Is that mainly to repair sewer, or add sewer lines, or capacity at the processing plant? Because I'm trying to correlate to the Slide 136, Bullet Item 3, which states that the Sewer Commission established a capital improvement fund that shall be used for the purchase of additional treatment plant facility, or provide for necessary action and corrections for infiltration in flow groundwater. Is it only restricted to infill groundwater, or can the fund be used for other purposes to help improve or reduce, or give incentives to reduce the inflow? Or is it only for the actual construction and maintenance of the sewer?
It's only to address what's specified in the legislation, which is to purchase additional treatment capacity, and to do all things necessary to correct, repair, prevent, and prohibit infiltration and inflow. We've come to this town meeting repeatedly in the last few years, having to deal with sewer pump stations, and repairs, and so forth. That's not what this fund is for. This fund was established, again, back almost 20 years ago, because of the foreseen need to acquire additional capacity that was perceived, even at that time, we couldn't do the entire town, which was, with our limited capacity at the Lowell plant. So no, it's not a maintenance fund, it is a capacity fund.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Our current contract with the Lowell Processing Center, does it not have any clause on what would happen in terms of overages? Do you pay an overage currently, or do they turn a blind eye, saying it's a friendly town, let's go on?
They bill us for actual flow. There are no penalty provisions, and the contract does not specify what happens if you exceed your limited, your permitted flow.
And how long is the contract valid for? Is it an annual or a biannual?
No, it's a 25-year contract that was negotiated about eight years ago, so, and that was a second contract of 25 years with the plant, so it's a permanent relationship.
And there is no penalties involved at this point?
It basically says that the community is responsible for the fines and penalties that may accrue, but there isn't an inherent penalty just for exceeding. Because we got to understand, sewer capacity is, in sewer operations are monitored and permitted by the federal government and the state government. That's, that's the, that's the principle in terms of who's going to permit the plants, and who licenses them going forward, and who would allow for future expansion. It's not a municipal activity, much like air quality plants and others. It's regulated by the federal and state government, because it discharges into the river, in this case, the flow, and it all has to do with clean water and so forth. So, again, the regulatory authority is not the city of Lowell, the regulatory authority is the EPA and the DEP.
So we have a contract which can have potentially a lot of damages assessed to Chelmsford, because we negotiated an unbounded contract? Or it's a contract that we don't have a model for, because the state and the federal authorities have not specified a rate of penalty of this?
Right, but this is not unique in Chelmsford. This is, this is what occurs across Massachusetts and across the country. The regulatory authority is the EPA at the federal level, and at the state in Massachusetts, and, you know, the situation of plant operations has been around for decades.
So if Chelmsford had asked eight years ago, what would be the rate of penalty, EPA would not have told us a rate?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm assuming that if today we went to the EPA and asked what the penalty rate is, we would not, they would not tell us the rate?
No, but what the EPA does, and if you follow the Lowell plant, what the Lowell plant suffers from is infiltration, particularly through the city of Lowell, that it discharges raw sewer into the, into the Merrick River during high rain events. And therefore, the city of Lowell is under consent order to address that. That consent order's been in place for almost a decade. The reason it doesn't get remedied is that the cost to address the infiltration in Lowell is prohibitive. And therefore, Congresswoman Trahan has met with the city of Lowell and the other towns to see if she can get federal legislation to federally support those type of solutions as part of the Clean Water Act. It's, again, it's, it's a infrastructure issue that exists, not only, as a congressman will, could let you know, not only in Chelmsford, but in many states across the country.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that clarification. Also, the scope is, there's a, there's a scope item that says investigate the possibility of transporting some water to the Belrika wastewater treatment plant. So do we, we do already have an existing connection to them, or would that be a new one that had to be laid?
That would be a new one. We, we're not sure, that's really promising, but it was, it was raised as a possibility.
As a possibility.
As a possibility, so we might as well look at all options of who's contiguous to us.
So there exists no connection at this point between Chelmsford and Belrika?
That's correct.
Okay, understood.
Sir, are you going to have many more questions, because you've asked quite a few?
Yeah.
And I think that, you know...
I understand, I understand, Mr. Moderator. This is 150K. I know that the town is very eager on conserving cash where it's feasible. And I think, if you want, I can go to a discussion, you can start the clock. My personal opinion is that this amount of money for this investigation seems to be a large amount. Maybe for certain specific fields, we need a bit of investigations by professionals. But as a previous speaker noted, there are very many tools that we can bring to bear upon this town's ability to give control over the inflow amount. There is a possibility, and I know that this is not within the ambit of town meeting, because this is a separate body called Chelmsford, southeast, west, north, whatever, three districts that don't do this. But this is a systemic problem that requires a system-level study, not just an outflow study, but an inflow study of how water rates are also controlled, not just a sewer rate can develop. So water conservation methods, as a previous speaker spoke, could also be tried and tested. It seems to me that there is an opportunity that if a federal representative will work with the federal agencies to give some money, that we may have to pony up. So it's a, it's a way for us to see how we can take this $2 million expense and put it towards what may have been an aging infrastructure that needs to be repaired, and Chelmsford is now being asked to pony up in that money. Whereas we could be using this and/or redoing the bylaw for the sewer capacity fee, and utilizing it for certain maintenance services that we require more often. I would also suggest that maybe there is a sewer capacity study group, again, that was reestablished, to see if several of these scope items could be reduced on cost by the volunteer efforts of the town members. So I think I would vote no for this money, and I would encourage others to do so, so that it forces Select Board and others to consider and establish a systemic study group that can look at already existing and cheaper options of getting to the same data, and then having the competent authorities of the professional opinions come in, and so that we can save a certain amount of money. This goes to the previous principles that I have stood by, as I say, is to use the money where they can make the most important impact. And so we should, if it's 100K, we save, it's 100K we save, it's 50K we save, it's 50K we save. So that's good to go to some other important things, like, you know, police, or fire, or other services that we need in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maureen Foley, Precinct 5. Is this money set aside for these conditions, for studying sewage issues?
Yes, it's limited monies. These monies can't be used for any other purpose. We can't use these monies to hire school teachers, or do anything else. It's a limited, restricted fund for the purpose of wastewater expansion.
When you were coming up with this request, because it is a regional problem, and all of these towns in the region are having the same problems we are, is part of this money working with the other towns and cities, or is this just us stepping forward to do a study? I'm just wondering if Lowell, and us, and Drake, and Tingsborough could go in on some kind of a comprehensive study?
Yes, and in fact, the town of Tingsborough has a consulting engineer that they're looking for in terms of their sewer flow. We've heard from the city of Lowell that they're gathering their data, and they should be prepared to meet with us within the next few weeks. And Drake has expressed interest as well, and Tewksbury said they'd come in on the discussions as well. So it, but it may involve that, but that's probably a component, because we don't believe that the Lowell plant can be expanded to meet all communities' needs. And there really isn't much expansion room at that site that, you know, to allow it to be, to be expanded fully to meet all the communities' needs, which is why we talked about the regional facility in Lowell, but also looked internally to the town, as well as to neighboring communities such as Belrika. So, yes, it would include the possibility of doing a regional study with the city and the other towns.
So at the moment, it may be that regional places are looking at competing interests and are not yet ready to do a comprehensive study? I'm just thinking that I, I understand why you're making this request, I'm just wondering if a request might be coming down the road, where we're all in it together, and we need to be figuring out how to do it all together.
Right, and that's, and these monies would be available for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, two to the town manager. Recently, a couple of years before, we did the COAID and the IOD over on Turnpike Road. You came to town meeting and asked us to spend a couple million dollars on the pump station on Mill Road to double the capacity. Did we look at the studies at all? I mean, we did studies already. Did we look at those studies to see what that meant? I know you told it, told town meeting that the system was 24 years old, and that's why we needed to improve it. I didn't understand at the time why we were doubling the capacity. Was the study looked at for that?
We looked at the actual flows that were going through the area, as well as the age of the current pump station. Those are the reasons that we did and came to this community to receive those monies and do the renovation of that pump station. So, yes, it had to do with flow and age of the current infrastructure.
And we needed to double the capacity at the time, or it was convenient to do so, I guess? Is that...
It was necessary to do so, because in the early phases of the sewer project, we're built not envisioning that the entire town would be sewed. And that, and therefore, you know, again, once they determined to sewer the entire town, and went into the new funding mechanism, some of which the Finance Director spoke of earlier, we recognized the need, as the sewer did back in 2002, that there wouldn't be sufficient capacity at that time to do the entire town. And as I said prior to that, they sold capacity to Tingsborough, which they had previously offered to Westford. So, again, it's, I guess it's easier to Monday morning quarterback here in 2020 about what could have been done back in the 90s or the early 2000s. But it was very clear even back then, as we said, that they knew we didn't have the capacity to sewer, serve the entire town. What has changed for both Lowell, Chelmsford, Drake, and Tingsborough is the, is the desire for housing stock that's multifamily, that weren't envisioned when these, when the plant was built and was done.
Yeah, my question was whether the study itself that was done, was that looked at with regard to doubling capacity there? And it sounds like not really. It was just that it was old, and we might as well...
No, and, and we looked at the flows that were going into the, into the treatment plant, yes.
And at that point, that was 100%. Good point, it was a long time ago in 2020 vision. The new, the Planning Board just approved a project on Turnpike and Mill Road, and they're asking for an eight-inch water main. Did we look at the sewer capacity? I'm assuming the water's going to leave the building at the same eight inches. Is that now considered, given that we know about sewer? Or is that just...
That's included in the calculations, and that was included when we imposed the moratorium, so that, that's already factored in. You're speaking of, you're speaking of the thermal fissure facility on Mill Road, that was, that was in place prior to the moratorium, and was factored into the consumption use going forward.
That's not part of the study that we're asking for tonight?
No, what's asked for the study tonight is to explore the options for additional sewer capacity at the Lowell plant, and any other alternatives, including within the town of Chelmsford or our neighboring communities.
Right, and when, when Chelmsford decided to sewer the whole town, I think we spent $160 million to do that, more or less, at that point, at the point that we finally sewed the whole town. We required residents to pay for a connection, whether they wanted to or not, whether they had a good septic or not. Can, can you, as part of this study, add in the people that did not want to do it, but were forced to switch, and check and see what that amount was? Tell town meeting, how much money did we force people to spend?
Mr. Latina, Mr. Latina, hold on, hold on. Mr. Latina, there is no way on God's green earth that he could determine who was forced, especially since a lot of it occurred even before he was town manager. So let's stay on the point, which is...
It's part of the study, I was asking, we required, Mr. Moderator, we required people to...
No, we all understand that, Mr. Latina. The question is, do you want to spend $150,000 to resolve an existing problem? Or do you want to go back to when we start, first started having sewer system installed? And I'm not willing to go that way.
The question I have is for the study, since we've ignored the other studies, it seems to me.
I don't think that was said. Why don't, why don't we stay focused on the issue?
The issue is another study for $150,000, Mr. Moderator.
That's right.
As one of the items in there, I'd be interested to know the people that we forced to connect that didn't need to connect.
No, 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 that's not the issue. The issue is what we're living with today.
Correct, so those folks could go switch back to...
No, Mr. Latina, don't keep going back to that, because I'm not going to let you. So let's go on to something else.
Thank you.
Sam Holden, Precinct 8, I move the question.
Thank you. We have a motion to move the question, but there's nobody else waiting in line, so that being the case, we'll just, we'll just vote on the, on Article 18. So all in favor of transferring $150,000 from the Chelmsford Sewer System Capital Improvement Fund for the study to determine the options to increase capacity? You'll vote yes, and if you're opposed, you'll vote no. And then we have one more article.
It's an interesting observation, that this was a problem that we've been worried about for nearly 20 years, almost since the inception of the sewer project. And now it's sort of an urgency that we have to address it in many different ways. And now it's sort of an urgency that we have to address it in many different ways.
The article passes 84 in favor, seven opposed, two abstentions, and now article 19.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This last article is an amendment to the town's general bylaw regarding connection to sewer. This is a technical correction bylaw amendment. It was drafted by town council and in its final form, including the red line you see on the screen there, reflects the input of not only the town DPW, but also the Board of Health, where they all support this article, including the health director and the chair of the health, health board. And what this, what does is that you see the language is stricken out because we no longer have a Sewer Commission in today's government structure because that was eliminated by the, by the completion of the sewer project as per the town's charter. The, it also just clarifies the longstanding sewer regulations that sewer capacity has to be available and a sewer line must be within 300 feet of a property in order for the Board of Health to require a connection. And then if you have a perfectly functioning septic system that doesn't present any type of environmental concern, then you're not going to be required to connect. So that concludes my presentation, Mr. Moderator.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
A majority of the finance committee recommends approval of article 19, the vote of 6 to 1 abstention.
Board of Selectmen have, the Select Board have a recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of four in favor, one absent in support of article 19.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
What about the people that were forced to tie in that now meet this? Because there are people off of High Street and Robin Hill that were forced to tie in that did, should never have had to.
I can't address what was done over the town over the last 40 years when the town put a sewer system.
This wasn't that long ago.
We, we followed our bylaws and the requirements to date. And what I can tell you is that if this bylaws is addressed, we will not be requiring anybody to connect to the sewer system that doesn't present an environmental threat and has a perfectly functioning sewer system. So, so yes, that we will stop taking the enforcement of the, of the, what would then be the previous bylaw requirements if this bylaws amended.
Just one, one second, please. Thank you very much for that. Town council has some information that the town meeting should know about.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, there was a friendly amendment that was made to this motion today. And it states, which shall be defined as the town having sufficient available sewer capacity to allow the connection. And then on this version, the parentheses ends right there, but if you see within 300 feet of the subject property.
That's where the parentheses is supposed to end.
It doesn't really make sense the way it's showing up there right now.
So, so Paul, this, this had to do with the friendly amendment?
Yes, that's, that's incorporated into the motion that's on the screen that I received from town council earlier today from.
But somehow the end parentheses got moved from what I sent to what's showing up on the screen.
So how should it be modified?
So you're going to move.
I presume it could be just taken as a friendly amendment right now.
Sure.
So, so Paul, just tell them where the end parentheses, what word?
The end parentheses should go at, you see where it's underlined, is located within 300 feet of the subject property. The end parentheses should be after property.
Not after the word, instead of connection, it'd be after property. Okay.
Okay. So we have that important clarification and now you've got.
Dave Rand, precinct. I want to know if new houses built in my neighborhood are going to be back on septic tanks again. Because that, my neighborhood was, no, stinking terrible after I lived there about 10 years. People, the sewer system was the greatest thing ever, came down the pike.
Well, to answer your, to answer your concern, think about what it costs to construct a septic system. It could be 25,000 at a minimum, you know, and it could approach 40 to 50 if you're doing a mounded septic system. I don't know anybody who would make that financial choice and to leave the town sewer system to make that type of a capital investment, knowing that you're going to have ongoing maintenance of a septic system going forward. So we don't foresee there's going to be this massive exodus of people seeking to disconnect from the town sewer system to install a septic system. And quite frankly, I, if it presented an environmental concern, the Board of Health wouldn't allow them to do so.
That wasn't my question. I said, if you build a new structure in my neighborhood, you could build a lot of them to go in behind all the people's houses and stuff. Are they going to be allowed to put in a septic system?
Yes.
I won't go for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Tebberdy, precinct one. If somebody is buying land, should there be land that's available and somebody is buying land? Who would they go to to find out if they have to include the cost of a septic system in there? Is it, is it, could they go to town hall and let them know?
They would go, they would go either to the Sewer Department of DPW and/or the Board of Health. The reason, if they wanted to do anything in terms of a septic, they'd have to go to the Board of Health because the Board of Health would, would enforce the Title V Septic Code. But if they wanted to go and had a question about septic, you know, sewer capacity, they go to DPW. See, DPW runs a sewer, runs a sewer division. Board of Health would do anything regarding septic.
Yeah, so, but a lot of people, when they go buy land to go build a house, they just, they don't know that they need to do that. And if you're, if you had been told previously that Chelmsford was all sewer, how would you know that this now has changed? I just, I'm concerned that people are going to be thinking they're buying something and all of a sudden they have this big bill to add a septic system in their system. How do we prevent them from being surprised?
There aren't that many vacant lots remaining in the community for somebody to buy.
All right.
And I would think to anybody that would, the first question they have is, is, you know, the connection to water and sewer. That would be, that'd be your first couple of questions you'd ask is, if I'm going to, if I'm going to build this new lot, you know, what's the connect, what's the availability of water and sewer?
Okay. We just need to make sure that if we pass this, that we make sure all the realtors understand.
Well, again, our, our long-term goal is to get additional sewer capacity so that everybody has capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Apparently not. So now we're going to be voting on the last Warren article of the evening regarding the amendment to the bylaw, article nine. And vote yes if you're in favor, vote no if you're not. And before we adjourn, which we will be doing shortly when I, I'll entertain a motion, I just encourage everybody to vote. Well, we have to, we have to, we have to, we have to wrap this one up first, Mr. Holden. But I appreciate the enthusiasm with which you're pursuing this. Article passes 81 in favor, seven opposed, two abstentions. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All, all in favor? Thank you.
Oh, you're a nice person.
And so this is Kelly Beadie for Chelmsford Telemedia. It is, I'm, I'm tempted to say that we ended up in the toilet here at this town meeting because these last two Warren articles had to do with our sewer system and important ones, of course. It's been something of a marathon tonight. We don't ordinarily go this late and so I'll be brief because the hour is quite late and our team from Chelmsford Telemedia, our staff and volunteers still need to knock down a lot of equipment. But it was interesting tonight that 19 Warren articles in one night is a pretty good clip and it does show a certain efficiency of getting through this. As I mentioned at the top, the consent agenda certainly helps. It also helped that there was a series of five articles in the middle there having to do with free cash and whether it ought to go to the stabilization fund or be rebated to the town's taxpayers, went more quickly than I expected it to because essentially after the first one was defeated, the rest kind of followed suit quickly. I, I will say that I found the wildlife feeding article very entertaining. It hearkens back to a time in the late 80s, I think, when there was a lot of discussion about beaver traps, kind of along the same lines. I myself have a, have a flock of wild turkeys that makes a regular pass through my yard and I'm not actively feeding them, but they are kind of colorful to watch. So for each is on, I guess. So I'm Kelly Beadie from the staff and volunteers of Chelmsford Telemedia, really thanking you for joining us tonight. And this important news, Halloween is still on from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There are guidelines on the town's website for making it safe for you and the little trick-or-treaters who go through your neighborhood. I suggest that you go there to get some tips. That's it for me. Good night, all.